Yep, yep.
You want to call us to order first?
Well, we'll call the order.
All right, all right. Well, thanks. I'm excited about it. But due to our housekeeping, we're part of the long, because I don't get right to the right to first step on the agenda yet. So, so unnoticed.
Unnoticed.
Here the earth, here the earth, and you're probably better off running the UWR at a welcome wifi and your family. Than relying on your site and your cell, it works for most people, but it's like a one bar thing in this room. And if you go on the WRF, you're welcome. It's open wifi. Go through the protocol, but then you'll have pretty good speed for your phone. Uh bathrooms are across the halls and uh we do have a scheduled break, but obviously some. Take breaks as you, as you need them. Jennifer's got some snack, light snacks. They have a meal coming. Um and the meal will be coming in a great way, so we'll get out, stretch out a little bit before we do legislative updates. We are filming today.
Filming today.
Um uh for posterity, but also just for public transparency, there's just topics that you're talking about. There isn't intended, isn't too much action items on here. The council could take action on any of these items. If there is a public. There's a special meaning to the council, so you can take action on it, or fix it or on the agenda. Um um most of the presentation, presentation style. Will provide a PowerPoint, got a folder. If it's okay with you, for video and for you, we'll probably just like Jennifer, myself and Jason.
Jason.
We'll just do the presentation in a regular, have a later conversational style. Which will be hard for Jason, and Jason doesn't like to stand up and wander around with their arms, but um that I think will work out best for today. So thanks to Jennifer and Ellen.
Jennifer and Ellen.
Don Sterling and John Sterling for assisting and getting us up going today. It does take a little bit to do a normal meeting of the council, but I think it's like that for us. Hopefully you'll find a work. Um little bit about where you're at today. For the same revelation, this revelation center. I think most of you have the opportunity to give yourself something or another, but we haven't. I'm happy to try to give you a tour at one of the breaks or something. This is a product that's part of the city councils. This was a risk from a household to take, provided the land. And it's UWRF, CBRF, the city and our city center, the part, founding partners of this. The LUMOIT today is kind of sponsored and leased by CBT C, so they provided the space, they did some force force out of here, but then it's available. Just like ourselves, so our other student trainings, including the tenants that are in here. UWRF, establishing for the center. So they have student interns who are in study programs, business programs, marketing and some other and graphic design, other interns have been on here. Um the, the director is. And then the small business development. So you know, this, that is all the office out here. Building is about ninety percent clean. In fact, the director is making her office. So that we can rent that office. I think QuickTrip is taking their office. They've got some programmatic stuff there. So they're gonna have an office out here. The training manager, I don't know that's working, but it's, so they're gonna be attending. So, so you know, seven years ago.
Seven years ago.
Also kind of took the lead in the development agreement and we provided the light out here. So I am grateful for the opportunity to have this out here today. I think it'll be a good, good format for us, good place for us to be. Any questions about? So we'll get, we'll get right started. Jennifer is going to try to help you try to hold on task, to help us keep on task today. I don't know that this is like taking for like fire hopeless, or people are going to. To the extent that the mayor and new mayor and staff under this, gonna try to paint their topics. Most of these topics, we don't get. It doesn't throw a timeline, move it on. The intent was to get some meaningful stump on your slate, get you together. Go through some of it. Um CIP, separate workshop. Um strategic initiative. The items coming to the council through the. Streetlight utility is. Global for the fees. The housing fund study is one of our strategic initiatives we're finishing up. We will talk about one of the three question leads why you're still in the mail today. We won't have time to do all three of them. That will just provide some reaction, or say that'll have to come back, a formal action. Including the other two questions. Legislative update, just updated, we let a overview of where things are at. Compensating, classing compensation study is essentially just to kind of whet your appetite for our type. The full report that'll come through and then a recommendation from me on how we would implement the findings of the study. Uh council liaison discussion for staff. It's the discussion about, does the council want to increase the amount of liaisons that you have as a body to other family groups? And then we'll, we'll wrap up today. Mining, I'll remind you, of course, me and the whole board of the C in the twenty twenty-two, when you're talking about the vision and the impact. That's what I've got on my day, where I've been worrying about, being there doing vision sessions with staff to try to see where our focus should be. Um we'll just touch on that briefly and make sure that we're kind of headed in the right direction. Um and then we'll try to get out of here by seven P M sharp. So with that. It's two fif, it's two twelve, I think we'll get started. So the first presenter will be Jason, he's talked about CIP. Josh is somewhere in the air. He was going to Europe, I think. So he helped do a. Give him some credit for his preparation about that mission. Hand it off to Jason.
We need to flip to Jason.
Oh, he's pulled out.
Okay, okay, okay.
Well, I guess we'll. Thank you. And um, and um, I guess I get the, this thing about your. The CIP and that's what it is. As Scott mentioned, you're gonna, we have a CIP workshop scheduled for you, the second meeting for them. And we do have a kind of a, a second workshop reserved if needed for the first meeting in July. After that, if you all gave us feedback. You know, you need more information or something to return to. So the, the event today, it's kind of today is an overview of where we're at. And kind of, I guess preemptive, what may, what may workshop. We're not necessarily prepared or prepared. That's about individualized projects or item that could items. Uh but certainly I can, and do my best, you know, with other, whatever questions, whatever I may. And we also think it's important, you know, what we have not put in, you know, some, some key items as well. So just as a reminder, our CIP, our products or items typically that have a value of five thousand dollars, like assets, asset projects. Even big planning and design projects. So it doesn't have to be a tangible asset, but we include those, they're five thousand dollars. And we revisit our five years CIP every two years. So we last had this discussion around the summer of twenty twenty, and we're still working on the twenty twenty-three projects in that CIP. And so what you'll be doing next is the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight CIA. And it's important to, I guess, to remind you, not only for your council, but we do this for staff as well. That the CIP, that is a capital improvement plan, it's just that, it's just that, but it's not a spending. It's, it's, it's providing a formal, kind of, um. Sense of direction. And what staff effort and finding in, in the fiscal plan is to help us achieve. But the actual money for those large little ticket items isn't available until you then appropriate in the budget process. And so the reason I say that often is my staff, often we hear, well, it's in the CIP, can I, can I prepare this truck or whatever? Just because it's in the CIP doesn't mean it's funded available until they're appropriated by you all. And we have many funding sources for the CIP. We, you know, whether it's tax levy or utility enterprise or any one of twenty plus special revenue. Grants or donations, whatever it may be, we use a multitude of funding sources, which is advantageous to be able to fund some of the stuff we can. It also can be sometimes tricky to put all the pieces together. So I put this slide, I'm here to, I wanted to give you an idea, so I guess, first let me talk a little bit about the process. So roughly about February, finance looks out of a solicitation for CIP update. And so we have staff, we have updates to any current items in the CIP they may have. Um and also submit new items. And, and certainly some of those are much needed projects, some of those are based on particular initiatives the council has adopted. And there's certainly some wish that the department has put in that they believe it would be beneficial to the public to have or to check. We've given them. So once that's all, finance then kind of pulls that all together, takes an initial look at possible funds. Or verify what the department has identified as possible funds. And then, um myself, Ellen, our permanent management analyst fellow. And the finance team then get together and meet with their department head, kind of cull through and be that first winner. To really try to identify versus one, what will happen if you can fund something, can we fit it into this year? Ideally, our team, that's kind of that, um myself, Ellen, Josh and Christine from finance, we're ideally looking at it. You know, the big picture view of knowing what each department has submitted for. So there's a lot of shuffling around. Then once we go through that process, then that brings in Scott, and then it all gets blown up anyways. And there's lots of scribbles and there's a bunch of orders and everything, because you know, the reality of this point is. In terms of that, essentially the staff, these are probably our biggest sorts of institutional ones that have been here at work for years now. So I put this slide over here. So it were basically department requests in the fiber CIP, like hundred and ten million dollars per die. And that's, that's, that's pretty sizable. I think, um, don't hold me to the exact figure, but I think the twenty twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-six CIP was. You ended up, was in the realm of fifty-five million dollars total. Um so almost twice as much as that, you know, in request. We then, um, we kind of hold it, but I hold it to around eighty million dollars, you know, what we're tightly to recommend. And I said, because this is still a work in progress, up until your second meeting of January. This is, we're continuing to find, you know, try to identify any possible alternatives, et cetera. So I guess, you know, the intent of the line, I guess to show you, we, eighty million dollars. But if we do at least initiate the beginnings of a process down to what we believe are manageable. In accordance with our own fiscal plan. I mentioned we have multiple funding sources, so that's just kind of our current draft, the CIP. This is, um, is that we're looking at. And, and so there's, I guess, a key component, I want to call it. Certainly, certainly, I, I think we need many optimists in this world, so sometimes you need people to pass on this as well. And that's what helps us prepare how the words are prepared the best sometimes, you know. We are relying heavily on the revenue for a lot of our particular items in the CIP. So none of those are here, and some of those, for example, Wisconsin S P minus, our, our state transition program. Uh those are counting those great revenues, some big, kind of big transportation, private transportation grants. Fire station bill, state grants, et cetera, et cetera. So we do rely heavily on. So you, you know, tax will have, you know, tax link is the biggest component of our funding. And through our utility, the utility here in the city, you know, that, you know, those enterprise funds. Pretty healthily into our utilities for the structure. So again, you're gonna get more into your work process. I guess the purpose of this slide is to show you that, you know, it's not all taxes, not all tax, as we use quite a bit of this. Um as a reminder. Our goals for our levy allocation, which, which we levy roughly seven to seven point five million dollars a year. Our goals for the allocation of that money is split out in the percentages you see there. I stress the word goals because we're not there yet, um, you know, but that, but that is what you've identified as, um. As where we'd like to get to in our fiscal planning. And the reason we're not there yet, you know, we're, I would say we're spending five to six percent on capital. Our debt service is a little bit higher. We know our library levy like amount going to the libraries a little bit higher. I think we're almost twelve percent ish. And so it's a work in progress and, and keeping in mind that, you know, it's, it's only a hundred percent. What I mean by that is, you know. It's got to balance out to, it can exceed a hundred percent. So, you know, if we're gonna give more, if we're gonna spend more on debt service, that's less available for. Library capital or operating or vice versa. And, and it is, I guess, key to, to stress that if we, the more, if we make decisions, if we made decisions to fund those extra. Um twenty million dollars in department CIP requests, that starts to impact then what we have available for our general fund, operating, library, et cetera. So it's, um. It's, I don't know, it's an art, not science, maybe. I think, um, that, that, I think Scott plays the role of the conductor or the maestro or the orchestra. That with a sheet of music that you all give him, wanting, you know, wanting him to lead us through, and that's kind of how we get here. And then we just kind of threw in where we're at on, on spending our levy right now. It's looking like we're actually gonna, we're trying to target a little bit less than what we have in the fiscal plan. To free up some capacity for elsewhere. We are, twenty twenty-four, we have the advantage of ARPA. ARPA being able to help us be creative in how we do some spending. Um with Lawson Lane reconstructed being the biggest project of twenty twenty-four dollar, dollar value wise. So here's some highlights, I guess, um, and, and there's, the CIP's big, you know, it's eighty million dollars, there's a lot of items. These are some of the big ticket items that you'll see. So in total, there's probably likely to be almost twenty-six million in Kenny Corridor related projects. Whether it's um walkway or fishing pier improvements or hydro related, Army Corps of Engineers study related. Kind of under that umbrella of the Kenny Corridor plan, those improvement, those projects total upwards of twenty-six million. We aren't.
Is Riverwalk in there or is it in Main Street?
Um so we are trying to get a fire station in the CIP.
Is Riverwalk in there or is it in Main?
It's not. Riverwalk, um, we're waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers project to help guide us into what we may be able to do.
So is it, is any of the River Corridor, right, twenty-six million part of what we will pay? What we would pay our share for?
Yes.
Okay. So that's essentially the kickstart to that project, is what you're saying, Jason?
That's the way I understand.
And Riverwalk can be, it depends on how the feasibility comes from any core. So that twenty-six million could include Riverwalk. We don't, we don't know yet to complete the feasibility.
I don't think any council owners want it.
We, yeah, we haven't heard much.
But it's not in the main, mainstream reconstruction number, that's just. That's what we're estimating for reconstruction of Main Street.
Not the alley, not burying anything down there?
Um I don't know that we have too much for buried utilities in there. And, and I don't know that this is just the Main Street from, uh. Division two walnut. This has probably got south, this may have some south main in it too.
So it's little South Main, um, I think when we're looking at the seven point six million for Main Street reconstruct, it does also involve some Second Street money. It was used as a loose label for this because, because I think our engineer believes, you know, you kind of, it doesn't make sense to do one without the other. Some improvements on, on second, second and division as well as that section of Main Street Scott was talking about. Um we do have the fire station in there. Currently it's in there, um, with heavy, heavy grant funding. And the, I think our goal, if, you know, we're hoping that all comes to fruition. But right now it's slated for the latter half of this CIP period. We do believe that with development coming in need eventually to do another well, so we want to go ahead and get planned for that. Our Todd, our engineer, working with utilities, they, you know, they, they calculate kind of what will be needed and. They tell us that come twenty twenty-seven, come twenty twenty-eight, we do need to be thinking about, um, doing an additional well.
In, in the general area of where in town?
I can't, I can't answer that.
Yeah, and look, it's looking, I mean, we, we don't, I don't want to make commitments because.
No, 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 I understand.
Very premature, but. It appears that our Man Valley extension project is going to allow for a pretty good opportunity to, to use. Those system improvements to put the well somewhere, but just, so on the west. Because we'll have the opportunity to do, we've already got the booster station, you got the new tower. White tail. And then we'll have that pressures on break. Radio road coming out of the university farm. So, I mean, we have to, they'll have to be thoughtful about agricultural impacts for nitrates and other things. So where you'd want to put it physically because of the pipes. May not be the best place to put it, but it's probably gonna be somewhere in, in the west.
Well, five isn't gonna be enough anymore?
Well, yeah, and this is, this is planning well ahead of need. So we're not running out of water.
No, I know.
We don't have any wells that have had consistent maintenance downtime. It's just, we have a system plan. It was like store, go storage next for white tail, do the looping project. The next thing on the list is the new well. And then at some point there'll be another, likely be another storage. But we're not. I think this is very, I view this as very proactive.
Yeah.
It's, you know, we have two point. I think we have over two million in capacity for our wells and, you know, our maximum day when everybody's throwing the sprinklers on them. You know, the hospitals pumping water and it is still like, um, just over a million gallons, so. We have a lot of redundancy in our system, this new looping is gonna help. So I don't want to give people, I don't want to give people the impression like this has moved up the list because of some. It's moved up the list because we've taken a bunch of the other utility projects off the list. And so what's the next thing to work on is doing the sighting and getting figured out where we will be. I'm not even sure. So that's why this is still a work in progress. I'm not sure that. Capital for constructing the well is gonna end up in my recommendation. I think the studying of the location and potentially acquiring property, if we had to do that, might end up in the five year, but. This is likely, we would need significant new growth.
With some of that.
Necessitate it.
Scott, would some of that cash that would pay for that well come off the tit if, if it's in Man Valley then?
It would not. We would do wells, wells are gonna be paid for through utility revenues. It will pay, be paid in, in part by connection fees and, you know, essentially the new impact of growth and development through Man Valley. That would, that would make me want to recommend moving it up as if we had some, some new impacts in Man Valley or even on the west end with. Apartment buildings and things like that, you might, because we get pretty significant impact fees for new connections. That's how our rates are set up is that the new is supposed to pay for the need to put this on.
So the growth would actually kind of pull to that location too, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I would guess when they do the study for well seven, that they're gonna find that. Part of the reason to do it is new growth and part of it is just overall system redundancy and service to the rest of the system because they want. Yeah, I would get beyond my skis here, but we are rotating wells right now. We, we're not, I mean, the wells are not running. Twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. They're on a schedule. We're turning well five on and then off and then doing this and doing that because you want to keep fresh wa, I mean. You keep fresh water in the system. You don't want, we don't just pump it up in the tank and let it sit. So I think most of the water is like less than forty-eight hours before it's out of the ground and in, out into the use, so. I just think the city engineer Todd is looking at going, hey, this is what the system, and you kind of lay yourself out and getting ahead of it for acquisition of property. We don't own the right spot. You potentially have to buy it too, so that take.
Yeah, so this would be looking six years away. So he's looking at, you know. Any possible consideration he should be thinking of.
Is the fire station a remodel of current location or a totally new building with eight and a half million?
Remodel.
Okay.
It's a, it's a teardown of about half of that structure. And then, uh, so a kind of a rebuild of what was tore down and then remodeling the portion that was left.
So would they tear down the police old police station?
Yeah.
What you're thinking, okay.
And the thought is that would be built into the new apparatus bay and the current existing apparatus space would be kind of converted into the station space. Cause apparatus bay space is cheaper to build. So we do, and, and remember just be like, this is not identifying funding sources, so it's not, you know, this is a multitude of funding sources, not. Necessarily levy, um, but we are likely to want to try to include, and we being kind of staff that have worked on this, would make, would like to try to include. Uh electric vehicle charger, that seems to be something that the community is looking for. Um and so we have, you know, some powerful choices fund through the electric utility that can help offset that. This does include hopefully a solar panel array on city hall. And, and quite a healthy, um, vehicle replacement plan throughout the life of this CIP. The nice thing is, um, we've done, we being the city have done a really good job over the years of essentially socking away a little bit of money each year to. To accumulate a vehicle, a fund to be able to spend on vehicles. Um and we also, um, I, you know, anecdotally from working for mul, several different municipalities. I think we do, we're probably much more conservative in a good way than most in that we keep our vehicles running in better shape and running a lot longer than a lot of the localities I've seen. And so, you know, we typically on a, um, on a light duty chassis car type thing, we're typically trying to get at least fifteen years. Heavy duty chassis, we're typically trying to get at least twenty years or more.
Are you looking at making any of those vehicles electric?
So this currently, no, there's not that recommendation in here. We do have the one Prius that's a hybrid, but this does not include a transition of any of our fleet and. I didn't have it in the next slide, to electric.
Think you ought to think of it, at least for the one, for the, for the vehicles that you know were just gonna be used around town.
Sure.
They're gonna be a lot cheaper to maintain.
I think, um, it's certainly being discussed.
Okay.
And it's, it's. I, I guess the fair answer was a conscious decision point not to include it in this one because we didn't feel we were informed and educated enough to be ready to do that. So we'd like to spend the next year or so studying kind of.
Yeah, it's changing fast, but at least for, for vehicles that you know are going to be, you know, it's like. Uh you know about how much you're gonna use them. It, it makes, makes a lot of sense.
I want to go off what Diane's saying real quick, just on the E charger. So this is not in any way, shape or form something that. We will pay thirty thousand through powerful choices for this charger, but it's not like the utilities coming in and saying, here you go. Cause that is what's happening in Minnesota, is Xcel's partnering with sites and they're just playing out there. That's why I wanted to ask.
In conjunction with that, my question is, is. We can't give away that power, right? DSC will not allow us to do that.
No, it would be a pay for the charge.
Yeah, but we would subsidize it with powerful choices. Is that what I'm hearing?
It would be initially installed through powerful choices and hopefully self-funding.
Okay, and then so they're.
Yeah, so they're initially paid for and then the electric use is what the user is paying the charge fee.
Is that a grant? When you say self-funding, Jason?
It's not. It's, it's our electric utility funds. Powerful choices is a component of that, but it's not a grant.
Would it be like a credit card charging still, like people could just?
Yeah, I think that's what's out there.
Okay, that, yeah, currently speaking as an owner of vehicle owner, it's like you've got an app on your phone, you wave the app and it debits your. Bank card or whatever. So but then there are a, a number of different outfits to do this. The charge point is the one I use, but you know, Tesla's got its own one and.
Yeah, so. I have one last one on this Jason, so on the, on the fleet vehicle, um, if we think of the fleet, just a hundred percent overall, everything, including, you know, the motor pool that just gets used. Sometimes when I'd opt. Gets used sometimes, but not often. What percent should we own versus lease?
Almost a hundred percent.
Okay.
And 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 the reason for that, we actually. Up until this, uh up until maybe two years ago, we actually leased a most of our motor pool. As well as like the pickup truck the police chief uses and some others. And it was, we had a previous fellow do a study, it was certainly more financially feasible. That's flipped dramatically. So we were able to purchase all those vehicles, we leased most of them for eight to twelve thousand dollars each and they had forty thousand miles or less. So that, so now we own all those and those lease rates, the police chief was trying to lease a new pickup truck and he has found those those rates have almost doubled.
I and I wouldn't disagree if that that sounds correct to me. It's interesting, my conversation with private sector, it's going the other way. They're all woven away from it, but I think some of that's the maintenance capability and and we have different capacities on that then.
I think we maybe would look at it differently if we didn't, if, so at some point, uh four years ago, five years ago. There was a kind of a lease of six, seven vehicles at one time. They all came kind of came up for purchase. At a at a cost we could never buy them for, so it's kind of for for the time being, it just made the most financial.
Understood.
Enterprises, enterprises government lease program was very aggressive and it's not so much anymore. They, I don't think they're that interested in leasing five or seven vehicles. Probably for bigger cities, they're probably still working hard, I don't know, but. The fact that we can buy those vehicles for for not very much was just like, well. No reason to sign up for a new lease.
I'm just I'm just heartened and spent scrubbing looked at. That's the main, sort of main question.
And we'll do it again. We won't assume, we do that periodically on these fleet, we. Will look and see what the John Deere Caterpillar or somebody's. Financing programs are. For a long time in government. Loaders, wheel loaders especially. The manufacturers wanted government to own them. They would sell them to us for a really steep discount with like a dollar buyout after, you know, so many years or. For a dollar, you could get a new one and they would take the old one and trade because they would sell the the two year old loader for more than we paid for it initially. To the private market. Some of that stuff has dynamically changed too, so we're just kind of always having to watch what's going on because just these strange. Trends in the industry can make a big difference for us. Um and then we also watch the resale market, which is still strong. People still want. If if it's from a government like ours with a reputation for taking care of the things, you just get a pretty good resale value on stuff. I think our challenge now is that we like to keep stuff so long that. That curve of when you should resell it versus keep it. It used to be the maintenance would get so high at the end of the curve, but now. You you were not throwing transmissions and engines that, you know, so now we're keeping trucks until. You can step your foot through the the floorboard. It's the chassis itself that's the problem, not mechanical, so. That things are getting better.
So I guess I want to take a second too to talk about what's not included, kind of some of the bigger things thus far and 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 and.
We got, sorry, we.
Rep is this with keeping in mind the scale's got to balance. And so, you know, it's it's not that anything, it's not that we can't add things based, as we go through the workshop with you and Jimmy. Uh but then we got to decide what we're not going to include that's included now. And so this currently does not include any big ticket park upgrades, so no ice rink, um the the new pool is not in this phase. No additional dog parks. Uh we we do believe there's going to be a time and need to expand our public works facility and do some renovation there. This does not include anything for that. And um. Most of, most building upgrade items that would come from the library or their most, you know, their most recent um architectural study on improvements. Are being put in with um donations or or um or grant funds as their funding source and not levy. And this does not include the downtown plan implementation or any downtown alley upgrades um for for. Just funding, it's challenging to make it work as well as strategic initiatives, um which I think we'll be talking more about.
With the library is the. We're just saying that if the library were going to do any upgrades, that they would have to do that with. Funds that are not part of the ten percent levy that we give them.
I think what the recommendation will be is if the library, whatever upgrades the library would like to do. If they don't want it to be part of that eleven percent they're currently getting, they likely would need to go seek donations or other sources.
Or use their foundation.
Cause they currently are in process of having. Well, at least when I left the board, they were in the process of having engineering firms come in and talk to them, right?
Yeah, yeah, no. And so they've submitted a lot of projects that we've included, but with donations or or fundraising, that's that's the that's the source. So kind of, we're going to keep fine tuning, um trying to get, you know, get everything ducks in a row and then come to you with a comprehensive. Plan in the second meeting in June, you'll get a read ahead packet. And then the the ideal timeline is that that will go to you in August for approval. Again, we're kind of reserving on our end a workshop in date in July in case that we find it's needed. And then once that's approved through that, uh we'd appropriate with the bond, the funds, you appropriate funds annually, even though it's a biannual process. So through that next appropriation process, the funds we get up um for twenty twenty four project. That's not bad. That's two minutes shy of the time.
That that clock's a little.
You're four minutes ahead.
Yeah, so you have four minutes to kind of take.
So what? I guess what question?
So none of this is done with any with any knowledge or any anticipation of shared revenue changes?
Correct. We did not take those into account.
Okay. Jason, with um regards to like big ticket items, the CIP could be um. How can I put this? We could actually start fundraising for items without actually saying we're going to pick a date and say we absolutely have to have it by a certain date, right? So for the ice rink, for example, we could potentially do like a um where we uh open a window where we start taking donations at some point. In the CIP, but we don't actually pick an end date and we just target, say, the first part of that.
Yeah, I think that's feasible. The council could do it, could initiate a capital campaign fundraising type endeavor. And I don't think we have to have the pro- the project specifically in a given year that that is then the target.
Yeah, cause I know the mayor's outlined before that we work towards stuff and I think that kind of makes sense and it kind of goes with a strategy like this.
Yeah, we also didn't include, so on those big ticket items, we didn't include any parking improvements at any of the parks, which we know are. There's some pressure to do that, but um so when we say we didn't include them. We didn't include them because we don't have a project right now to do the fundraising, but you could, the council could decide that they want to include projects. And then identify fundraising for donations as the the sole source or the primary source. This is intended primarily to tell you, we we haven't come up with a. Good or easy way to find levy for the most part, or a specific grant fund that would do it. That's why we haven't included it in the CIP at this point, but that's a policy decision you guys could make about. What do you want more effort on? To get funded.
Has the city itself ever done a fundraising campaign or would it be more like Friends of the Ice Rink?
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, in a way, we have, the last CIP, we put the new fire safety trailer that was a hundred and something thousand in the CIP. As donation based and and the the fire department, which is a department of the city.
Right.
Raised the funds to purchase it.
Yeah, but that was that was Scott going up giving most of it.
I didn't want to say it that way.
So so we're making staff do all the work.
Yeah, and we could, you could do that for specific items if the council thought.
Yeah.
Was important, or you could do the friend, you could put the challenge. I think that's going to be one of the big policy issues here on the CIP is the library. Director on behalf, I believe, of the library board made significant requests. For projects and identified the sole source of funding as levy. And and so I am not going to recommend that to you. It's, I don't see how that works at all, given our, what priorities you've laid out. But we didn't, but I didn't cut all the projects. For some of them, we kept in and said, well, yeah, I suppose that's feasible that you could fundraise. But it's not going to, that one isn't going to be. City staff assigned to fundraise it. It isn't us hiring a fundraising consultant. It would be something that the library would have to do. And there is some library projects that we agreed we should do and then we've tried to identify grant funding or something, some alternative revenue. Other than levy to do it. And then there are some, there's a few levy fund, I.
Building maintenance.
I am likely to recommend to you that you use levy, which is going to be beyond their target operating budget. I don't see any other way to do it. Because there are things that I think if you don't start doing, then you deteriorate the value of the asset you have, so.
And if we had, sorry, this is my last question, if, just got my brain thinking. If we were to do at like even, you know, Friends of the Dog Park or uh folks uh. Oh my gosh, I just, ProtoShare, you know, if they were doing fundraising initiatives or people were doing the dog park. We as the council would have to agree to designate that land. To them, so there's no guarantee upfront that like if we were going to build an ice rink, that we would then designate Glen Park or whatever. We would have to have. How would that process work for a group that was interested? Would they have to then come to us to get the okay and then start fundraising?
We would hope so.
The baseball council.
It's not always how it's happened.
I think we, I think we have to assign a liaison from the city and then have an official account with the city that all the donations would go to, to make sure it's going in the right spot.
Either that or just tell them to make up their own board. We'll give them the land if we agree on it and they can figure the fun, why, why put more onus on us?
I think um would Scott, would it be fair to say that that by and large, we view the baseball stadium and baseball council as a. Successful example of how that partnership could work?
Yes, I think in the library. Both the initial and construction and the remodel, the lower level is, you know. Was done, kind of everybody eyes open saying, yeah, we're going to do this and this is what we're all agreeing we're going to do and who's what. Baseball would have been that way. So that we've had, we have some success, uh soccer fields with the soccer association. You know, the council passed a resolution saying, we know what you're up to. If you're successful in doing what you say you're going to do, this is what we're going to do. And then it also said, so we're not going to do like. Don't drag us into something that the council's not comfortable with staff or resources being. So I think that's the model that we have. Going for us.
And Cork, the Cork Trails.
Yeah. At the trails of White Tail. And that, and so White Tail is an example where we may not have had all the stuff in the right order. There was a lot more, there was some organic entrepreneurial stuff, our neighbors play, or not our neighbors play, um. ProtoShare is starting to get in that. Place where you need to be thoughtful. Cause I think some things are. There may have been the idea that there's commitments that have been made that haven't been made, you know, with our own discrepancies and stuff, so we'll have to figure that out. Which is, this is a good segue into strategic initiative and if it's okay with everybody to just jump right into that. Because the council could also determine. Now, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on front on this, but this discussion, there's room for this, this, you know, would you assign staff a strategic initiative? To develop a partnership with XYZ to do this. You could, that could be a specific thing you say also. So can we jump back to, oh, you know, there. So. So strategic initiatives. Are grounded in our strategic plan. We have, we have decided or not decided, which means we've decided not to do a big redo of the strategic plan. So that's not on my list right now. If the council wants to add it to the strategic initiatives, that would be something to think about, but. But I am not anticipating that that's the direction you want us to take. In other words, you think we have a good foundation in the strategic plan. And we want to keep doing projects that support that, so. This is kind of from the the snapshot of the original. And what these outcomes were, connected community, you know, housing, sports, economic, you can go down this list of what. The council and the community came up with, and so there's a. An update on that. Some of these result in specific strategic. Initiatives, some don't necessarily, but there's still something that you use, I believe, to evaluate my performance and also something I use to value my own, so. Even if there's not a strategic initiative tracked to it. Also doing things. So I'm doing, you know, for an example of that would be adequate response to the service demand. That's something I'm spending a lot of time constantly trying to figure out. Projecting FTE, trying to understand what we're doing, where the trends are going. So there may not be a strategic initiative that says. Study the whole city organization and 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 right size the organization. That's something we do constantly. As part of our processes. So, so we're in a tough spot because. The ambition of each council member, the mayor, the city administrator. And almost universally, all our staff is well beyond our capabilities. So, and we have ridden. Some incredible level of productivity and got just a tremendous amount of big projects. But we need to catch our breath, right? My strong recommendation to the council this time around. Is that we be much less ambitious. In quantity. Doesn't mean we're not doing super ambitious. Very complicated, large projects. It just means the sheer number, I think, has to come. Come down. So what I am likely to recommend to you is is this. And then we'll talk a little bit about what's not on here and then spend some time talking through what. You may want to provide as direction, so disappointments or excitement or or. Also for you to have a discussion with each other about. Are you willing to accept that premise? Cause you don't have to. You can say, I don't care. Let's just get, I want to add three more things to this and get it done. And then I can say, well. You know, that'll cost this amount of money for FTE or whatever, and you can say, sure, whatever costs, we want to do it. This isn't our, the list that I'm creating is less about financial resources and more about. Staffing resources. So we have about. Well, you gave me the number, Jennifer. Sixty seven percent of employees have been in their position for less than seven years. So that doesn't mean that's, that's not pure tenure. So we have people that have been with us longer than seven years, but not in their position. So I'm, there's no panic. You should understand I'm not panicking whatsoever. But I want to be thoughtful about the fact that it's a different organization than we had ten years ago where. Where tenure was higher, tenure in the position was higher. And frankly, I think the world was moving a lot slower. Um the pace of change was was a little bit slower. So I I'm cautioning the council and myself mostly, um and my staff who are super ambitious and are disappointed that. You know, we can't do more more is that we need to make sure that we're focused on the quality of what we're putting out. And so this is, this is the recommendation. And this may seem fairly anticlimactic because. Most of these things are already things that this group in particular, because you can have changeover in last election, you've already said this is what you want to work on. And most of them are underway. So it's like, well, what's the new fun stuff we're doing, Scott? Well. We're not really doing a lot of new, we have a lot of new fun stuff that was new and fun two and three years ago that you said do this. And it's going to take a lot of work to get it done. Bio solids is a, is a big thing. The urbanization of Wausen Lane is much larger than most people outside of this room realize. For complexity, especially given the soils and terrain and historic nature of that as a highway and. Urban and rural and the farm and all kinds of stuff. So that's a big, big project.
Is there any land acquisition for that?
We're hoping not. There may be very.
Somebody asked that.
There may literally be like a triangle of this big.
Literally that.
Yeah, at the corner of uh. Cas- Cascade and. I guess the, it's the turn lane to go on to Wausen, so. And that's just to move a pole utility.
So it's the southwest corner?
It is the southwest corner. Actually, it's not even the corner, it's, there's something with that right. Actually, it's not even the corner. It's, there's something with that right away there in the sidewalk and pole, utility pole, but we're trying to eliminate. We're trying not to do any land acquisition.
Well, just don't undersize it.
We have a pretty good amount of property, so I think, I, I, I think it's unlikely that we'll be able to do some acquisition. And there may be something engineering wise that comes up in the final design where all of a sudden they gotta move it two feet and then we're acquiring three, three temporary limited easements or something, so. But we don't have any money in the budget. It's not a big budget item for us to do acquisition.
Is that a hiss of grant?
That is not a hiss of grant. It is. It's STP local. It's one of the more local. Federal money through the state grants.
So in, I understand our policy around sidewalks and I just went to a neighborhood street party. I was invited as a councilperson. It was very odd. But really nice. Um, I was surprised. I shouldn't say odd. I was very surprised to be invited. But, um, one, every person that came up to talk to me wanted to talk about the sidewalks. So I explained, like, we have a fund. This is how we do it. And like, I. Talked about how it was different from when I lived in St. Paul where you got. A thank you, that's the word I'm looking for, a couple thousand dollars every year. So people were initially like, oh, but. Have we, like, done an education campaign in the city around the sidewalks and how we pay for them? And if people want to be assessed so that their sidewalk can be upgraded?
We have not. Sidewalk infill has been on the CIP and strategic initiative drafts in the past that not. Baited on the list from the council. So that's, that's something you could decide.
Is there history I should know about only having lived here six years that, like. It's just been a generalized, people don't wanna be assessed.
I don't, at least my recollection, others can jump in. I don't believe the council's been anti-sidewalk or not wanted to talk about sidewalk or not ever wanted to do infill. I, I think it's literally not made it to the. It's, it's been project priority sixteen out of, and only twelve get on the list.
I think to be fair, I, uh, our approach has been opportunistic with said funding.
Yes, I've, I've tried to keep sidewalks alive, even they don't want, even if it's not a strategic initiative.
Uh, the only reason I bring it up is literally every person that talked to me, talked to me about the sidewalks. And I was like.
Where was the party?
On, uh, on Maple between fourth and sixth.
Did you talk to my parents or what?
No, I don't think so.
They're talking to the sidewalks they have and they want them fixed and.
Well, specifically the one across the street from the exit to the post office onto Maple, like that sidewalk area there was one of their big ones. But like, I just, it was just surprising to me that people wanted to talk to me about sidewalks and not something else. So that's why I bring it up, like, it, cause when I explained to them the way in which we did it, they were surprised. So I didn't know if there ever had been, like, people understand how we fix sidewalks or.
Believe. We, we haven't spent a significant effort on it. We do, we do have maintenance, you know.
We, we will go out and fix significantly heaved panels in the ramps at the corner, so, so obviously I'm gonna ride by that area and then take a look.
Well, they probably talked to you about from second to third.
Yes, because on the, across the street from the e- exit of the, there is a blue house. Next to River Stitch, and there is a person in that house that is handicapped. And that sidewalk right there is not super handicap accessible.
Scott, we have what, thirty thousand put aside for sidewalk repair, I think? It's not a lot when it comes to that.
I don't know the number, but I would agree it's not a lot. I mean, it, it allows us to fix a few panels of sidewalk here and there. We are, we are opportunistic, so like if we have sidewalk near a park. We may use park maintenance money to fix a few panels of sidewalk. If we have sidewalk near a TID. That needs repairing, we might do it. If we have a road resurfacing project, then we're gonna go out and look like a block within that to kind of see what. What we're doing. So we use some curb and gutter, some sidewalk. But to be, we don't have any money in the CIP. Levy money or assessments to aggressively address sidewalks.
Okay, so that makes me ask a follow-up and I know we can keep pulling at threads and lots of. So I understand the current plan or, or operational method in fifty years. Or do sidewalks look like in this district?
I think they would, I believe our current methodology would generally maintain reasonably safe status quo sidewalk system. And in fifty years, they might change the state model where you can use TID money for, you know, for another, right? Yeah, and it, it'll depend on, you know, weather, depends on tree roots, it depends on things that may not be, I may not be careful enough to, to be considering right now, but. It, they're not going to be better than today. How many years did you say? Twenty?
That's fifty.
Fifty? I mean, in fifty, you're gonna have the issue of the sidewalks that went in with TID money. Don't have an identified maintenance. Funding source, so if the TID put them in, in twenty twenty-three. Generally sidewalks last a long time, so hopefully you're only doing a couple panels here and there in the forty or fifty years, but. That's gonna just be from general maintenance or we do the current. Current, it's allow us to assess commercial properties. It's only non-residential, it's only residential properties that don't get assessed, so. We actually generally have good compliance from commercial property owners. You know, if you tell, if you ask the bank or the grocery store or someone that they need to replace the sidewalk. They usually have no problem doing it. In fact, they want to because of their insurance and stuff. It's, the residential areas are the ones where. You know, if, if a tree root puts, puts a sidewalk up that much. Unless we get a complaint about it or we have a project there or there's a city council person that lives in that neighborhood or there's an active walker. We do have ambassadors, but they're all informal. So like Linda Russo walks all over town with her son. And we have said, I know the mayor, Reed Ronson, when he was engineer, I've said to her, hey, when you're out walking. You see sidewalks that are harder to roll over or whatever, let us know and then we can. Put that, but we don't yet have a drone technology where we fly and that's coming. That we're gonna, it's gonna be a lot less expensive to, to inspect. So right now I don't even know what, I don't think we could tell you exactly the condition of our sidewalk system. As a baseline. We're getting to the point where that's not, we're not gonna be too far from that. So where our streets, we all have rated, but we don't have all the sidewalks rated the same way. But that's coming. And then we'd be able to decide if we're falling behind for maintenance or not. But generally, if you keep doing this, what you're doing. Sidewalks aren't gonna be better, but they're probably not gonna be worse because of that policy. It's, and that's, so you're not talking about infill necessarily. You're talking about repair of existing, or were they talking about infill spots too?
No, they were talking about repair of existing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's almost always the thing. It's just people who, and it's one of those quick judge, judgments for, they know how uneven it is and they've learned the area, right? So they kinda get used to it, but someone else comes, they're the one that trips and makes the point. Oh, sidewalks are terrible here. Well, yeah, they're not, but.
Yeah, and hit it sidewalks are not gonna be aggressively replaced by us. Basically has to get to, you know, scientific terms, it'd probably toe stubber. It's probably gotta, it's probably gotta get to the point where you could, or just about anybody would stub their toe on it before we're gonna actively do it.
But then we're gonna just come out and grind it probably. If it's not too bad.
They're gonna evaluate a variety of techniques to maintain it. Grinding is one, which we don't use much anymore. Sawing, we still do. We probably aren't gonna do a lot of. Mortaring or whatever, where you kinda create little rooms. That, that hasn't worked great. Mudjacking is generally effective, so that might be, especially if the tree is gone, if you've stumped. So, so does that answer that question?
It does.
And as far as pulling at threads, this is your hour and a half. This is the session we expected you would. Take where you wanna take it and have more open discussion, but.
Well, sidewalks go to housing and I think of the interior, I think of Diane, in your district too. It's a really cool district. They're cool homes. But I always feel that.
Sidewalk's really crummy, by the way.
Yeah, there you go, right? Gosh, have you been at council for a long? No, so it just, it goes in those are things, cause young families come and they'll see this great house, right? They're excited by it and they wanna live in something that's older. But then they see a sidewalk where they know they're located on a tricycle, it's gonna like hit this thing for, they might go elsewhere. And so it, it just starts in the process of how you, of how you analyze it and then how you make a decision and execute long-term. Cause it's not an overnight thing, clearly.
And rest, and somebody who buys a house in that situation who wants to repair the sidewalk themselves can do that. And there are places, in fact, where, where that has been done by red, you know, they put in a new tur- they buy a home. They put it in the driveway and then they add a couple panels on their yard because they want. They're doing it as a public amenity, but they're also doing it as a private amenity for the tricycle.
Yeah.
For the kids, because that's, that's what they know. But we don't. Right now, if you didn't add a strategic initiative or give us otherwise direction. Neither the CIP that's likely to be recommended nor the strategic initiatives is gonna aggressively improve sidewalk conditions and falls.
Well, I think sidewalks and alleys kind of go together, which also in my neighborhood are not awesome.
Only the company car in the alley. That's my rule.
And council members have talked in the past about essentially. Not abandoning the alleys, although some, we've had council members that actually wanna legally do that, but basically say it's, it's not a public amenity. That is a private amenity shared by multiple people. It's basically a backyard driveway. City doesn't, shouldn't be doing anything. That's not necessarily our, that isn't our approach right now. But they are very low priority. As, as long as the garbage truck and the bow truck can generally get through, that's the level of service that we're providing.
When we graded roads and bridges and there was a workshop. I don't know if Diane, if you were under. And we got D's. Was a D on, on alleyways? We talked about it. We said that's, that's okay.
And I'm pretty sure they're, they would be wandering towards the F.
Probably. It also keeps the speed down in alleys.
And we are finding it's typically, you know, the trash trucks are putting a lot of the big wear in there.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Trash not being picked up in the front of the home. And there are a lot of our peer communities that are assessing either a hundred percent, seventy-five percent, fifty percent of the cost of maintaining those alleys.
So I think it would be interesting, and I don't know if anybody else would find this interesting, but even, you know. In the strategic initiative and if it's this one or twenty-five, twenty-seven, you know, it's not. To me, it's not like house on fire sort of thing, but to do that assessment of our sidewalks. And then having, having some sort of education campaign with the general public to say. You know, if this is a priority for you, because it's literally like one of the only, I've been contacted about. Here are ways in which we can do this and. You know, like, you know, maybe the public decides they wanna assess themselves and, but that we allow them the opportunity to make that call. Instead of making it for them.
Yeah, so I, I flipped to this one and then I'm gonna quick flip back. So, so I'll give you a preview where we're headed. So this is what is likely to be recommended. And then this was the stuff that I have generally on the list from all of you. Or from citizen survey or from, you know, it's been identified, it, what I, there, this is art and science. So I have called some of our reports and resolutions by the council and things. And looked at one-on-one notes with all of you, but it's also me admittedly trying to figure out how to summarize this. So the sidewalk thing could either be in transportation utility, street maintenance financing plan, or it could be, it, it has been in the past. Both sidewalks and alleys have been a separate. Like, let's review the quality of alleys and come up with a financing plan. That, that is a pretty significant project. It would likely be part of a transportation utility and a street maintenance financing plan. Understanding, I don't have those, I'm not recommending those. I'm just saying, I haven't forgot about them. I just don't see how we get this stuff to the top of the list yet, so. That's, that's where this stuff is, so, so just briefly finishing this one. I only have the Town of Clifton boundary agreement for the next two years. The citizen survey I have on here, cause I'm assuming we're gonna keep doing that every two years for benchmark. Hydro, we need to finish up. The Kenny Corridor, the USACE, the Army Corps, we've said we wanna do that. And then I do think science and technology is a big enough thing that it's gonna take some, some more of our effort.
Like what?
It might be related to the person who's managing that project.
Oh, you are now? Yeah, I mean, we don't, all the road stuff has not been figured out, access to, to Cascade and all those. And they're not, they're not even a ninety percent plan yet, so they got a long ways to go to figure out where curb and gutter and all that stuff is gonna work and. They haven't even got their courtyards and stuff finalized, so there may be city involvement with like how we're gonna line this up and like the roundabouts. Plus, they're likely gonna, um, continue to ask us to support the project with legislators and others, so I think. That's where we're at. And then I think we'll also be wanting to figure out if there is a role for us in any kind of. Financial or other resource support for the, the center. Either through the utilities or TIDS or something else. I don't think TIDS are a good fit. There's not much there for increment.
I'd have a hard time supporting a TID to another.
But they've got some business, business and industry connections that I think might make sense for us to look at. And so that'll be something that takes some analysis for us.
To your Alyssa's question, I guess for me, you know, I agree with what you said, Mr. Simpson. I think you could look at commonly asked questions and explain how, you know, we're opportunistic about how we bring in money for sidewalks. And that people, if they want to go and move forward, they can purchase into, if they want to make slight improvements. If we're under like a commonly asked question thing, if that's the case, because, you know, I've gotten questions like that too.
Yeah, the owner's manual for living here is the thing I've always thought about, like, you know, how do you figure out, like, you just bought this new thing or you just entered in and like, put a sidewalk, go to the sidewalk table. So that. We can always do better on trying to figure that.
How does garbage work?
Well, and everybody that I had talked to about this had just recently moved from the cities in, into town. And I think things are done so differently here than they aren't, because in the cities you have to, you know. At least in St. Paul, you have to like purchase your own garbage. The recycling is, but I mean, it's. Everybody has different, you know, all that kind of stuff. And so it's just different when you move here. So that actually I think is a great idea. Maybe second entering in there. And then also, if we're doing the twenty twenty-five citizen survey, could. Is that well enough answered by a diverse number, enough like diverse areas of town? That we could put something in there about sidewalks and alleyways?
Yep, I mean, and I, I'm pretty confident about this, the. When we get the data back, it's, looks pretty good for the spread north, southeast, west and renter versus owner and apartment versus single family, so. Now, each, every two year, we, we've had some variations or. One survey I've been like, well, we didn't get as much renter as we'd like or whatever, but. Generally, and they adjust for that. So remember when you get your percentages, they're doing weighted. They're weighting stuff based on their response to, so yeah, you could do custom questions on that. And that's where this stuff comes in, so. Even if we're not doing a strategic initiative, it's important for us to keep in mind as staff where we might be headed. Because again, asking the right questions of people, using engagement opportunities to get two, three, four years ahead. It's also important, I would argue. It's also important, I would argue for all of you, like when you're doing engagement and cookout conversations and whatever, to be like, well, this is what we're focused on today. That's, tell me more about your interest in sidewalks, you know, we've talked about transportation utility or this or that. So knowing kind of what might be coming up. It isn't meant to just be a fast change, like, this isn't an appeasement document for you, this is really a planning document for us. It's kind of like the out years of the CIP plan. Year six through ten is not make believe in the CIP, it's, we're trying, Josh and I are trying to figure out, like, what would happen if we had to do this project, that project, but obviously not as finite, not as focused as the first five years plan and this would be, we added this, like, few times ago, we added this kind of future thing to just kind of see feedback from council, like, no, we never want to revisit Mission Vision Valley, just take it off, like, we're not doing it. What we've got is good for ten years, just stop. So that's the other, you know, and there's some things that are challenging to think about having as a strategic initiative, given the legislative conditions, so like the rental housing quality strategy, we've talked about a lot. And I've all, I've told you all, I'm skeptical, you, we could do a big old study about how we can make everything better, but I think we're going to have limited opportunities legally to implement it.
Stable lettuce.
And then there's things I just kind of, we staff hope that we can just make it two more years, like eco-site relocation, like the compost site. Because we probably can get by, should we be trying to spend a bunch of time on it, maybe, but when I go back to what these are, it, it just doesn't compete. It doesn't mean it won't get on a department, it might not be a lesser project or something, but we have to give ourselves permission to say we're not going to work on some stuff, so that's kind of where this is all. Because curbside compostables has been a big one too, like, with one of the ways to do that is just, your compost stuff, including grass clippings, tree debris and food waste, would it just be part of our curbside program and then we don't worry about somebody else, you know, waste management does, but I don't know how we could, I didn't seem to raise. So, let's see, we can't put dots on the screen, um.
I will say though, I really appreciate that you as the boss are saying we need to take a breath, because I think, you know, I've only been on since the pandemic and the amount of work that I've seen the staff do, both at home, the flexibility, the quality of work. I think the ability to get that done in a way that makes people feel proud and gives them the time and space to do it without burning them out, I think is really important, um, and we want to keep the people we have, so I think that that is, I'm really glad that you have recognized that people do need a moment to breathe after all that you guys have done over the last two and a half years that I've seen, so I think it's incredible and you should be, uh, I don't know, commended, thank you, words, words don't come to me. Uh, commended for that, I think you guys have done an incredible job in challenging times, so I agree with that.
Although, you know, frankly, if you can accomplish all the things that, that are still on the list, that's still a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah.
That's still a lot of work, but, um, you know, yeah, I, I, like Alyssa, uh, yeah, I appreciate your perspective because, you know, that so many of these big projects are in process and, you know, hey firstly, I'm great at starting things, I'm not so great with the follow-through. So, you know, sometimes you just need to focus on, let's, okay, we've got to get these done, and we do have a much younger staff than we used to. But new people in new positions and, you know, they can learn just a lot by following through on, on the projects that we've already got going.
Scott, I know when I toured the biosolids in Wisconsin Dells, that they had a lot of extra space and maybe that, whenever that's put in, that would be a better time to go back to compost and other items that might somehow work with that facility and the space when you assess it.
Yeah, and I think we're, the reason that this list, assuming you're okay with this being our list, the reason that a list like this is still important for us to talk about is because we have some opportunities with partners and you don't always know when they're going to, when it's ripe, when the partnership is right. So, for exa- a specific example, and I'm not, you know, making commitments for, for them obviously, but you have a new chancellor at the university who has an interest in doing some more partnerships and wanting to get, you know, tangible partnerships, visible partnerships. So the chancellor's saying to me, what are the problems that the council is facing that don't make it on your list? You know, for you to do, but you think there could be something to do, it might be a match for us, well then you start talking, you know, literally talking about ice rink, compost site, grow to share, like baseball, all, all the things that are coming up that we think are, everybody agrees are important, but they can, it's hard to make it to that list, it's like, well, do you have a way to get something take off the plate for the community and so that's, so I'm, I'm hesitant on some of these when, if it didn't even make it on the future council stuff, when we get those partnership opportunities, I, I sometimes say, I don't see where we fit, because I don't know that that's in the council's dialogue. Sometimes I'll say to that group, hey, you, you ought to get the di- you're going to have to get the dialogue going because it's not on their radar, if you think it's important, do that. So, that, so Glenn, ice rink, all that stuff I have generally under this Glen Park phase two, final design and financing. The way my brain works, we've already got it figured out. I know it's just a concept plan, but, you know, we did a lot of work as a community to figure out what we want to do. What we thought we were going to do three years ago isn't going to be the final, I, I, I understand it'll be different. Same with Hoffman, we, we have this Hoffman Park plan, we, we just haven't done the final design and financing to figure out how we can make it come to fruition. And even though that's one of my personal and professional favorites to try to do, I, I don't think it ranks yet. It's just not up there. Hoffman is holding on, it's not, there's, it's tight, it's, it's friendly spaces. A lot of people are literally and figuratively kind of moving around, past each other. But it's working for now and, and this way, if we get people in the community that want to do partnerships, then you, you can say, yeah, it's on our list. Here's the, here's the concept plan that we had, how does this fit? Main Street corridor plan is the big, big, big one that didn't make it, I spent a lot of time just thinking and I, I think that is the biggest one to show that if we really mean take a breath, that would be showing that we're going to take a breath, because staff wants to do it, I want to do it. I'm pretty sure there's a consensus on the council that you're ready to go forward with it. But I think two years is fine to wait. There, sorry.
No, I was, I was going to say, you had money in the CIP for it, but I was thinking, that's in the future.
Yeah, I moved the, and I moved the money back in the CIP because based on what I thought I was going to do as a strategic initiative, so I think the numbers you saw on the bar charts.
That I believe is designed twenty-eight with the construction as such, in the, in the next five years, CIP twenty-nine and a half.
For Main Street?
For right now, I think that's the placeholder that's in there.
That's the most disappointing one to me. That's, that, that plan was supposed to go before the comp plan, and I remember specifically having conversations about giving up on Main Street so we can do the comp plan and the Main Street would follow behind. So I'm, I'm disappointed by that, I understand the situation, I've been an advocate in the past about, we have too much on our plate and we don't have enough room to react to a project or a situation that come out without kicking something else off the work plan, but I, I disappointed Main Street isn't going to be out there until twenty-eight or whatever you're saying.
Well, you would do, you would do the strategic initiative as early as, I should have updates on that for this one, so twenty-six, twenty-seven, or twenty, it would be twenty-five, twenty-seven, I guess, July one, twenty-five to June thirty, twenty-seven, if we keep the same format.
And you'd be revisiting, revisiting the CIP at the same time, yeah.
Is there advantage of doing the fire station or like having that kind of time with then the starting date of the Main Street?
I, I, I would hesitate to tell you that it helps any grand plan, I, what we are faced with often as a community is lots of good ideas that don't always necessarily, you can't always figure out what's step A, what's step B, what's step C, so the Main Street is a great example. We could have done a Main Street corridor plan before comp plan and before Kenny Corridor plan. And because we didn't, both the Kenny Corridor plan and the comp plan, comprehensive plan have elements of a downtown planning effort in them, but they were more best guesses unless actually let's mold this down, this Main Street. The Main Street plan is actually a molding, could you make an argument that Main Street should have been one and Kenny Corridor two and comp plan three, you can also make the argument comp plan should be one and, and Kenny Corridor should have been two. So we're, we, I think you said opportunistic, we're, we're like, we are opportunistic in all facets of managing this community. So, money, time, resources, the right people, the right political environment. I, we also may find through our work with the federal government that Main Street becomes some new priority, which I don't think it is right now in the current administration, um, at least not in the traditional sense that there's all big buckets of money for Main Street. If that was the case, then that would make sense to move stuff up, down and around, whatever, kind of like we actually think right now, water, resources, you know, are higher on the list of funding, so that's what makes Kenny Corridor, we think easier to get money for. Fire stations have kind of moved up the priority list in the federal funding source, so that's where we're going with that, but no, I would, I don't, I don't think doing the fire station first or the, or whatever would, would change generally what's going on, and that's the other thing is, you know, I don't have fire station on here, we, we debated whether we needed to actually put that as a strategic initiative because I think the way the CIP and that is going to lay out, we're going to have to do some design work, one way or the other. The concern is if we don't actually think it's feasible to get the federal money, then I think we still should look at a potentially greenfield site out and I, I think you end up doing two designs and doing a weighted analysis. Right now, we don't need to do the second analysis because all the federal focuses on the one site, we're not going to get money for the greenfield site, so. Yeah, that made, the Main Street and the housing, where is that? Housing affordability strategy, Main Street, and community recreation were kind of the last three on my list. When I say my list again, certainly I have preferences bias all that, but when I, when I say my list, I mean, I was trying to synthesize what I thought the council has been telling you, what the community said in their survey, because the community recreation is actually one that I don't think council members have necessarily been saying. It's me reading the trends in the community survey going, high value on connection to the outdoors, high value on adult recreation, keeps coming up in surveys. Potentially changes in our staffing for community recreation. A bunch of change at the university, a bunch of change at the school district. That's probably a project that someone we need to figure out.
But again, why wouldn't we partner with the school district and then use some of their resources?
Well, I think we would and that's why, but I think it's a big deal, I think when we do it, we've got to get some commitment from our partners, that they're going to spend a bunch of time and resources on it. Because I think it's going to be somewhat of a transition from what we all are doing currently.
Kind of along with the rental housing quality, because I know that's, a lot of that is in my district. Another thing that was brought to my attention at the street party that I'd heard about but don't know a lot about, do we have policies in place around five oh one C3s buying homes and using them for whatever purpose, but it's not specifically a rental, but it could be that they're using it as a treatment center or a sober living facility, things like that, do we have anything in place that says, like, here are the parameters that if, if that were what's happening, do we have any parameters? I didn't have an answer for that.
We don't, um, and we could have limited. So federal and state law has a lot to say about what we can and cannot do. The basic thing that cities can do is you can, there's ways to create ordinances that would limit the satur- what I would consider saturation or density.
Okay.
And you can say no more than this many types of these facilities within a radius or whatever, that's about the limit, so Positive Alternatives wants to, right now, wants to open up another, this is not an actual example, I'm just giving you an example. Positive Alternatives, which is, which is a housing, I don't know best to describe it, I don't, I don't know what the new term for what they're doing is, but teens and up in some kind of housing transition, either because of their own doing or court ordered, um, kind of congregate living. Right now, federal law allows them to go into residential neighborhood and we, the city can't say you may not have a facility like that.
Okay.
But the city could say, we, you can only have three on a block or two on a block or so many within. There's some ways, I, we'd have to be very careful with our attorney to do it, but some cities have done that, like, so that like a whole street is not converted in or half a street is converted into that, CBRF, there's community-based residential facility law. There's laws about religious purchasing and their freedom to do that, and so the best we could do is probably limit.
Okay, and I'm not proposing that, I just didn't know, like they, I was asked and I was like, no idea.
And we're fairly aggressive on the tax exempt. We are not easy, we don't just, when somebody tells us they don't want to pay taxes.
Right.
We don't, our assessor doesn't just give them the tax exemption, they, they have to go through the whole statutory process to say, here's why we would be tax exempt, and most of those facilities have won't done, are not doing that, they're.
Paying taxes.
They're paying taxes, although some of them have been more aggressive in trying to not pay taxes. So, so how can we, how would this be best for council to continue this conversation? So maybe the first thing I want to do is, before we delve into this more is maybe a show of hands that there aren't any of these projects that you wa- would want to take off. Is there general agreement that these are?
Project Earth started.
Or we're half pregnant on the biosolids. So are we with Powell Avenue, so are we with Watson Lane.
Yep.
Can't do any of those.
Van Valley, same thing.
Van Valley.
Yeah, and I don't, well, you know, I'm not sure how much we have to help the university in the science and technology center that's going to take them a buck out. Well, I don't know.
Yeah, and I.
Yeah, that one, that one, that's kind of like a, I see that as kind of a space holder.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest you could trade a big project for that.
No, no.
But. With the biosolids, is, I know in the last utility meeting, uh, Kevin talked about scaling and how, um, the other groups in Ellsworth haven't, they've cut uh, their amount like they would if we were still with them in the future. Is River Falls considered like the potential of partnership with Hudson coming over here to actually save money potentially or not? Or is that not a conversation?
We have not, but they.
Or is that a futuristic?
Richmond and Hudson.
That's a dynamic situation.
Yeah, both of those cities have asked by my office if we would consider a partnership for them, and my initial reaction was, we appreciate you as neighbors and we would never say never, but it's probably never. And so we did have a meeting with them and encouraged them to consider looking for their own approaches. Because I don't, I didn't get the impression. I, I don't see this as a revenue thing for us. It could be, but I don't. I think we got enough on our plate.
Ours is being designed and constructed with, constructed with the ability to add a second driver in the future. For expensive, but, but relatively nominal fee to the big project. So we're building a capacity to, to build it bigger in the future.
I don't want to give away strategy in the public meeting, but because I think there's some gen, some, but from, from a transparency standpoint, I could see a reason for us to have discussions with them about a short term solution. Based on the economy of scale argument and us scale, us having to build in capacity for future growth in the city. So there may be an argument to be made, well, could we help somebody out in a short term? That helps us finance the facility, knowing they'd be out when we have our own growth coming in.
Have an MOU sort of thing?
But building it twice as big for Hudson or New Richmond is not something we have on the table. We're, we're scoping for us. Our scope may be big enough to help somebody out. And it might not be Hudson or Richmond, it might be that something happens at the Ellsworth Biosolids Facility and there's some other thing we haven't predicted. But right now, we are very focused on getting our own thing up and, up and at and out of the biosolids.
So if there ever was a potential to be temporary, is what you're saying pretty much?
I, I don't see a good argument right now for us doing anything other than temporary help to a neighbor. Well, it's a little bit about talking about a second spouse when you're still in divorce.
Things could change for them too, and suddenly we don't have a customer.
There's, yeah, there's a lot of parallels to the current arrangement to why would we want? There's a lot, there is some, seems like some natural reasons for us to, to build the capacity ourselves and, and adding the complexity. It's not out of the question, but just doesn't make a lot of sense right now, also given our capacity. I'm telling you, we have limited capacity to do these big projects. I don't know that I want to make that one and a half times more complicated, bigger or whatever. But if we were in their shoes, I would want them to at least have a meeting with us. So that's what, what we did with them to say, let's see if there's a way that we're not looking at this right.
I just wouldn't trust them. They can't run their own damn cities. Why do we want to do it for them?
So I would say to, to Mr. Councilman Morrisette's point, you, you literally could stop any of these, like, but it's, it would be a big deal. So I, it wasn't meant to be that hard of a question for you, but is there anything on there that the council thinks? So then, so then the flip of that is what's missing on this list? Like what are individual council members, like, why isn't such, you know, where is this project that I brought up? And I'm my one on one with you for the last three years and why isn't it on there? Is, did I miss anything? Or did staff miss something that you expected to come out of a, another report, another committee?
Street maintenance financing plan, is that just how to get more of it?
That would be
How we want to do it?
Yeah, we'd be kind of looking at this whole idea of how are, do we expect streets to last seventy years and what's the cycle of, of one seventy of the financing? And what's the cycle for mill and overlay and resourcing and assessments and all those things? Right now, we primarily pay for our street maintenance out of levy. And we, we think we're close to keeping up, but almost, almost All engineers we've ever hired have been employed by us, always say, we need more money. Give us more, we need to do more aggressive maintenance. So that's what that is.
With new built, I'm sorry, did I just, with new buildings, do we require that they put electrical underground? Or with new housing developments and things like that, are we requiring?
Subdivisions, we've been underground. I don't know the percentage, but we have a good percentage of our existing system underground and it's not conversationist. Although maybe it is conversation strategy, it's conversion, converting overhead to underground.
What is housing affordability strategy?
I think that would encompass a number of things. There's no magic to that title. It's, are we, are there tools the city can engage to help affordability? Are there, so that could be, do we have regulations that are causing cost problems that we should review? As our zoning makes sense to encourage kind of housing? Do we have any direct financing programs or things we want to use as a city? Are we aggressive enough on our trying to get grants or invite people? It's, it's the whole, it's basically taking the, the two housing studies we've done that have said, here's the need and trying to feel, figure out how to, how to fill it. And so it could be, it could be housing strategy rather than housing affordability. But I think affordability is what a lot of people have been, the vernacular has been. You know, if, if you have a million dollars for a house and don't really have, we don't need a strategy for that.
I think the only thing that's, that we might want to consider, and I'm not even sure how I state this, is some sort of public safety study with all, with police, fire and, and our relationship with the line of her EMS. Some sort of studying that relationship, studying each of the departments to see. Well, I guess if you just fire and police, to see if they're, if we're properly staffed, equipped, strategically thinking about it, just looking at that over there and thinking about the, the SCBA stuff. Are we, are we funding enough of those things proactively to replace? The fire department's getting new equipment, the police department needs training. Do they need, you know, different technology changes there? Though that would be something I think we, we should start to think about. Well, I think they would let us know, but I think, I think there's maybe some, and I think they, they may organically be doing this, but there's probably some synergies between the two that, that we could maybe enhance or help. And it may be going on already, we don't know a lot. And that's great. But I'm just wondering if there isn't some sort of a formal study or recap.
Yeah, so we can do, so we can do either organizational staffing studies or we can do operational studies for individual departments or areas.
Does your organizational staffing study usually go into police at fire? Is that more just city all or maintenance?
No, I mean, we, we've done them both broadly and we've done them department specific.
I will say that, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm thinking more of, of just a public safety component. You and I talked a little bit before about, you know, disasters, train gets on derail, you know, those types of things. How would we respond to those types of things? I know we've got some of that planning in place, but what does that look like for the different departments that we deal with and, and those, those situations?
The county, I know Pierce County has a disaster plan, you know, what happens if there's something at Prairie Island? Big scale, multi-jurisdictional, multi-municipal.
Our plan complements both counties and, and it, it may be worthwhile considering a more comprehensive and thorough review and update of our emergency operations plan with an accompanying functional and full scale exercise.
And no offense, I'm sorry, no offense to Pierce or St. Mary County. I watched the, the cooperation that happened during COVID. I had zero confidence in either of them to take care of us. It's time for us to take care of ourselves. So.
Yeah, and what you're talking about, like just public safety is, you know, kind of like more unique to the city limits. I mean, I assume that the police department has, you know, some plans in place. It's like, God forbid, what happens if we've got a school shooting? You know, or the recent events with law enforcement being shot. You know, firefight, you know, so I, I assume they've got their own plans in place, but
I think they do, but I think a comprehensive review of public safety is an umbrella. Not just police, not just fire. EMS is sort of, used to be part of us, but now, you know, we're still integral to what we're doing. But some sort of a overview umbrella, look at public safety and response and any synergies they can gain.
Yeah, and, no, no, no. And I was going to say, even, I mean, as, that is awful, but less awful than like a school shooting or something else is the train derailments that have happened where toxic chemicals have like. I think it would be interesting to, you know, like they do with school children now, they give them paths on how to get out of the school. If something like that happened in the city, do residents understand where they should go? Like what street should we use to exit if we have to evacuate the city, things like that? But the thing I was going to ask about with the public safety thing, I don't, Dan, I don't know if you've noticed this too, but I, I don't live very far from the fire station. So I'm assuming most of the sirens I'm hearing are the fire station, but it has been a lot lately. And I mean, I don't know what the uptick is, but there's a lot of, I'm assuming police and fires that have been happening. And like, is that, which I don't need to know the details, but is this more like the fire department doing EMT calls or is this crap?
Typically is increasing grass fire, motorcycle accidents, a lot on the roads more, so typically see this.
I don't know, it's a lot this year in, in comparison to last year even.
It's been a real, that's been a really dry month. I know there've been several fights.
Yeah, if we're doing a comprehensive review on safety, I think it'd be in the city's interest and maybe to look for grants. But for taking people, you know, buildings that are rental or just ownership and saying, you know, having standard fire boxes, electrical wiring in houses might be something we should look at as standardizing. And that's in a practical way though.
Yeah, I think that kind of goes back to the rental housing, there's so much we can do. We can't hardly do anything.
But as, you know, maybe if there's a grant provided, depending on who's, you know, state legislature or federal potentially. There's only so many that need.
Then the whole ecosystem, the compost, should we, is that something we should maybe look at? Looking at a little closer since we don't know how we're going to keep paying for it, we don't know what we're going to do with it. That, should that be a little more? Or are we okay with what we're doing and just kind of live along to the?
What I am likely to recommend to you is even though you could make a strong argument that we should spend some time on that, I don't think we should. Just in the general category of let's focus on those other few things for a couple of years here.
I mean, it's easier working fine. Nobody's playing much ball anymore.
And the answer generally then to requests from everybody is, yeah, we are aware that at some point we have to deal with this. We're just not going to do it right, right now. And I, I mean this sincerely, the council can suggest that what is on this doesn't make you aggressive or mean or not listening to staff. But you have to be the final arbiters of, do you think that this is an adequate list of strategic initiatives? Are you satisfied at the end of the two years that these got done? That you're getting, that the community's getting its money's worth from staff, that the effort is being put in the right places or generating the work? Because we, I can add, we could add three or four of these to the strategic initiatives and we'll get them done. But it's the, it's the long-term impact on the organization I'm starting to try to guard against. It's not, I have no doubt that staff will rally and crank and get the stuff out. But it's what is left at the end of twenty, you know, on July one of twenty five, where are we at?
So Scott, if a partnership was to arise to the mayor's question, would you bring it before us and say there's a potential partnership with the, with college, for example?
Yeah, I, the, the street initiative list has never stayed, I don't believe it's stayed exactly the same as what the council's resolution was in, in the history of strategic initiatives. There's, there's been something, and it doesn't have to be as dramatic as COVID or something else. There's been other things that have just come up where it's like, hey, everybody in the room agrees. We got to shift to this thing, but then it might delay something else. Unfortunately, on, some of these would be, are more difficult to shift and delay from. You know, you, the, the hydro, this stuff can be shifted and delayed. This can be shifted and delayed. You don't have even to a certain extent, like Wasson can be shifted and delayed a bit because you have time in your agreements. So if, I'm, I'm not wanting to do that. What I'm saying is if something came up big and we all agreed that was the biggest thing we needed to focus on, then we'd have to go through this list and say, wow, we might have to, you know, move that back or change. It also doesn't mean that there isn't tons of other work getting done. It's always this art of what's a strategic initiative and what's just an expectation we have of the departments to get done every year.
Well, let me ask this then, can you, whoops, other page, Greg, can you guys handle that list?
Yes, I, I feel confident that we can, we can not only handle those, but there'll be quality projects. And that, I don't say that with ease, like it's, we need strategy and implementation and we need to make sure we keep our staffing levels at, you know, if we lose two or three key employees, that makes it harder. But even if those contingencies happen, I would be prepared to make a move to the council to get these done. I'm assuming there's going to be certain amount of turnover and changes and weather and whatever else. We can get this done, even with the unpredictability of the feds and the Army Corps and some of that stuff.
Scott, with Man Valley.
Thank you for asking that. No, I, that's
With Man Valley, we took it in so many different steps, discussion, design, different things. Is there, is there a way to take a beginning step portion of main street and put that on the list? I'm not saying the whole thing, but I'm asking, if you break it into components, a study or something that, that's going to have to be done. At some point, can we get that done here? Because it, it, it just seems like main street keeps becoming the little redheaded stepchild and gets pushed off. If, if we can just even start a component of it and fit it into here.
The things that come top of mind, I'm sorry Amy was going to be here today, but she had something come up. But I think what the development director Peterson would say is, first of all, she'd say, we're ready to do, let's do it, let's do a big engagement. But I think she's coming around to my way of thinking about, we're going here. I think she'd say you could do like existing conditions inventory. You could do an infrastructure analysis, right? What are the conditions of the water and sewer pipes and stuff that everybody doesn't see? You could start to do that. But I think you'd have to weigh whether you want to get people. So it's a political question and a practical implementation question. From a political standpoint, if you're feeling you want to get this going and you want to try to get some books in so that it is inevitable that the next step is to do them, then you might want to start, you might want to demand staff do that. Start something. But when we started, I can tell you it will generate some tide of interest. And then people will say, let's, you know, go, go, go. And so from a practical standpoint, I'd rather wait until we're ready to actually go, go, go. But I could also see why the council would say, well, tough, that's, I want to, we got to do something. We got to be able to say, we're doing, even if it's step one half, we want, we've got to do something.
Wouldn't Riverwalk kind of be tied into with the kidney corridor though, as some of the fire station?
Yeah, that might, that might be. And, and that's, I do, I mean, I think everybody knows I, how passionate I am about Riverwalk. I've been since two thousand twelve when I got on, two years on the council, but. I think keeping and sending the message that a vibrant downtown is important to us and a vibrant core is, is important to the, to the business owners down there and the residents to hear so that we don't get the, well, you're just gonna throw out on the periphery and
Right.
We gotta keep that going and to be able to point to something to say, hey, it's a big process. It's an engagement, it's a big engagement process, uh, similar to what we did for, for comp plan, what we did for Kenny Corridor, what we did for Glen and Hoffman Parks. This is a big engagement process. That's coming, but we're gonna start to do these steps, so my preference is yes, half a step. And I, I understand that'll drag it along and frankly, that's, that's my goal. It hasn't moved, it hasn't risen yet to the, to the.
And it's, you know, the core, uh, having a vibrant core is like, it's a big part of the comp plan.
Yes.
You know, so we made that step, yeah, I, I, I'm with you, that sounds, that sounds good. Is there some little thing that we could like sneak in here that to at least, um, we could say, yeah, that this will be, this, this, this thing will be useful?
Yep.
With the rest of the process.
With, with the level set that it, that the little thing that's being advocated doesn't set the whole thing on fire because it can't.
Right, right, no.
Yeah.
If people are excited about it, that's good with the understanding, we explaining the understanding of, okay, we're doing this, a little preliminary stuff. It ain't starting till summer of twenty-five, then we're gonna get into it. You know what I mean?
You all know how long these things take.
Could, for example, we take, um, with our, uh, when we, when we look at, um, streetlight utility, couldn't we kind of just say in that plan that some of that money would be set aside for updating, um, the lighting in the downtown, so it would be more tour, you know, touristic promotional, kind of match the vibe of the city? I think we need to do an inventory to understand what we have and what we wanna have. Right, that'd be part of it too, but, but actually having that as, you know, kind of like getting a segue into it.
Yeah, you could, you could use that as a dipping your toe, but it also, that's another one where we, like we were talking earlier in this conversation about what's one, two, three, four, lighting standards, I think you could argue probably towards the end of the detailed work in implementation. Although you could, you could literally say, well, we're gonna do that as a first step, we gotta show something that.
Or at least a plan of it.
Yeah, but I don't know how you, I, I was thinking like, could you do the Boulevard first or could you do some decision? And I just, I don't know where to pull stuff apart. I've got some ideas that I think we can think about. Is there, am I hearing the council as a whole correctly that you, you certainly wouldn't have been disappointed with the choice to add Main Street in? If that was the only thing that got added in for workload, there isn't something on this list that's higher for the council as a whole than Main Street? Or, or maybe you haven't thought that through yet, so that's not fair, but.
I would like to at some point, and it's, it's not now, cause I think, uh, Mr. Morris, that's right, but I think we're after private raise for ice rink if we ever wanna see it, if, where my kids graduate high school.
Right.
So I just want clarity of how to create that partnership, that baseball council and, and then it doesn't need to be on this thing, but that to me would be a helpful pull away.
That's a great thing to talk to the university about too.
Well, they're just loaded with money.
There's a lot of good.
No, I mean.
We need some good community partners.
Building it there.
Building it's been for the university.
Yeah, why not?
They already have one.
Yeah.
One, nine, oh, they got an indoor.
And they, they got, they have that space rule takeaway, you know, that will deal, so if they add, they got us trapped.
They, they may have, but yeah, I don't. It, it's more of a possibility than I think I would have thought, right? For an outdoor rink to be located somewhere on the mall or something, I can't.
Okay, well, that's, that's, yeah, I like.
Right, it had, again, we're trying to find partnerships that have duly, you shouldn't say duly, just because the university is the community, but we all know that there's, there has been two kinds of communities, well, could students use it and would it be good for amenity for the, the community?
I, I will just echo loudly, I mean, a, a concern, I, I took the idea of not having real strong opinions for two years seriously. I'm outside to that now, so I get to have some, and one of them is as we grow, right, and we're all excited about growth, how do you maintain what you have? And I think always Main Street hearkens back to every, everything here, Main Street's that flow through. And we get that takes time. For what, we all, well, I think we're all pretty patient people in this council overall, but I think just having something, um, I hate to say a bone, but just to throw something out there that allows that first thing. Cause then we, we can say, hey, we're working, this Main Street thing is an important part of what we're doing too.
So Scott, are you asking, is there anything on that list more important than Main Street?
Yes, that's the question I'm asking.
I agree with.
I don't think so.
Scott, Dan.
I don't think so, I think.
That's true. So housing affordability is, is, is an issue, people mention that a lot. That's kind of built in to, to, built into our discussion of what we've spent money on.
We could talk about it all.
And we can talk.
Do you get the answer to that? Yeah, like the whole, the whole rest of the, the whole rest of the country wants to hear it.
So, so also, I also wanna encourage you to have that conversation with the community in whatever formats you have engagement. It's easy for people to say, you don't care about composting because you're not working on the strategy for compost. It's not at all what it says about the city. What it says is, we have a broad profile of services that we're trying to maintain at any given time and we have a thoughtful prioritization process of where are we gonna spend our limited time and resources to, to improve and make better or evaluate what we're doing. So not putting on the strategic initiative of regional park strategy doesn't mean that you don't recognize that that was in the comp plan and that we wanna get to it. So I would, you know, you, we do have to engage our community and these are the things that the council, when you do approve this, this is the list, right? And so if somebody wants to criticize council staff or others, like, why aren't you working on this? You can both acknowledge that that's an important thing they're suggesting you do and that we're not gonna do it. It's okay to say no because organizations that tried to just pile on and do everything are not successful in the long run. And that's what we're working on here, so again, we could add, you could pull three or four of these projects and we'll get them done. But at some point you're starting to have, I think, and it's a lagging indicator, staff burnout and that, so you can't, we just have to take some judgments about what we're seeing, observing and the data we're getting from employees and me looking at raw data for experience levels and other things. I, I, we're at the point where I think for the good of the long-term organization, we need to get some focus on some specific wins. So we have enough energy to celebrate this stuff.
Yeah.
Cause part of what we've been doing for the last, I'd say, six or eight years is we, we have a lot of energy to get the stuff done. And then staff are like, oh, do I have to go to a grog, Ricky, do I have to do this? Do I have, I gotta get onto my next, I gotta get onto the next thing to get done. And I think we wanna have, that's an indicator to me that we should be thoughtful about what we're doing because sometimes we're not even using any energy to celebrate, it's just like crank another thing out. Which some of you all might have felt in your own jobs too.
One thing I did wanna ask, a little bit different than the ice rink. We don't have any money allocated for the ice rink, but I, I could be wrong about this, but we do have like in our vision, money allocated for the redo of the pool. Right? No, we have none.
Any money in the current CIP, five, the five-year of the CIP for the pool.
That's a fundraiser.
That was, so that's what I was asking, that's what I was about to ask. Do we know, cause there is a design somewhere, right, that was created?
It's a concept.
Concept?
So it's.
How ex, do we know how much that would cover?
At the time, it was over, over a million, but I'd say that.
Two, two million dollar price tag on.
Right, and again, I haven't included that even as an initiative to try to figure out a fundraise for the pool. Even though I think it's a worthy thing.
Yeah.
Once we get these other things done, we might have some time to do that.
No, I was, yeah, I was just thinking that.
But no, we don't have money, we don't have money put in our plan for the pool.
That there are things that I think, you know, I've heard enough people say like to fundraise for, like there's just, I think there's interest out there. I just don't, I think people think it's, the city's gonna do it eventually, so they don't.
They're, they're not trying to prioritize the.
Encouragingly.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm saying, like, yes.
Always encouragingly, yes. Little guppies of the poor can form a foundation.
So build all the. That process though, I think, you know, you could have put a five-year process of discovering what the community wants, then you got another five years to figure out how you're gonna fund it.
Yeah.
That's a ten-year process you're asking about a list, and that's probably what you need to tell them.
Well, it, I'm thinking more like the Rockfall Swim Club is fundraising to pay for the school district's pool upgrades. So like the school district isn't paying for it, the swim club is paying for it. So I'm thinking like if there are, I've heard this, I mean, it's, you know, just a few people, but just so I say, well, hey, if you're really interested in that, you could start a fundraiser for it. Like I, that's kind of what I wanna.
So can you recess this officially?
Sure. Can you recess?
Ten.
For fifteen minutes, ten minutes? What's your timeline look like?
Four twenty.
Four twenty, so for about fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, fifteen minutes? Is there a reset?
Well, no, we need to, we need to.
Careful of the faucets here in the men's room, I don't know if they fixed them in the women's room, but they, I, to use the bathroom here.
For numbers.
It's free with water.
I mean, she's not on school.
Oh, that's not.
But you know what, that might be.
And the mystery of the marketplace, right? To my. You put a purple, purple rays and it's raining.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Right? Kind of wanted another like six years, this is how we do it. So we do, we just do it. When you're serving mail, whatever.
Is he?
Yeah, certainly, and then you put the naming rates of that and just.
Yeah, it's just a thing.
So that's if you, uh, if you, uh. A song. Um, two day. But, okay.
We're going here.
Okay, so now we're gonna take a little bit of time and talk to you about, um, streetlight re, recovery fee or special charge update, and this is, um, certainly not the first time you as a council have talked about this and it's probably been many years coming. And so we wanted to provide, provide you an update of kind of the current status and what are the next steps? And, um, I guess certainly entertain any questions or, or any sort of consensus of additional information's needed. So I guess as a reminder, um, and, and certain, you know, Scott, I, I hope will chime in and help with history if needed. But the idea of charging a streetlight, um, recovery fee was first reviewed by council in two thousand and ten with no action taken after that. Council chose not to enact. And then in two thousand and nineteen, it was revisited at workshop and council at that time had a consensus that, um, thought something we should incorporate into our long-term fiscal planning for further consideration. And so staff did do that, added to the fiscal plan, and then we, um, you did a, a workshop during the first workshop of the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two biennial budget process. Staff talked to you a little bit further to, to get your feelings on the streetlight recovery fee. And the consensus and support was still there to kind of include that and it, I believe indeed was. So staff built the twenty-three and twenty-four budget with that in mind, with a projected, what those fee revenues would be. You have since adopted an ordinance, um, that allows for the charging, that allows for the creation of the streetlight recovery fee, and then the next step that would occur would be the, um, a setting of the rates, rate or rates and, and formal resolution to kind of begin the, the streetlight recovery fee. So, um, and I think it is, Josh, Josh, um, helped put this together for me. Um, I think it's important to point out, um, that in the twenty-three and twenty-four budget, as you see there, we did include some of these projected funds in balancing the budget. And so if, if for, for any reason, we decide not to move forward with, with having the availability of those funds, um, it's certainly, I don't think it, it, it certainly creates a situation in which we have to revisit the budget and figure out what, you know, what that means and where we may have to find those savings. So, um, it's kind of a, a, a complex process, uh, to kind of determine how to get there. So first and foremost, uh, state statute allows us to charge for certain services rendered to the community. And so the, the statute that allows for this is the same statute that allows for us to charge for, um, our trash collection. That allows us to charge for if we go in to cut somebody's grass or noxious weeds, because it gets so tall. Um, ironically, if we wanted to, it also allows for the charge of sidewalk repair and curb and gutter repair. So we believe we have, um, legal standing to do so. And I, the reason I say that, I think you all know that over the years in Wisconsin, this has been challenged a couple of times. The idea of a streetlight utility fee or recovery fee. And so what I'm gonna be talking to you about is based on what we're referring to as the Rice Lake model. Rice Lake used this model to implement their streetlight recovery fee around two thousand and five. It's been challenged twice and both times Rice Lake has been successful in defending. And so it is kind of seen within the state as the standard right now and, and, and what we certainly are recommending you to consider and approve. Cannot charge the fee, we can't recovery, we can't recover for what we don't provide. And so we're not providing streetlights to undevelop parcels. They're not getting the services rendered that a streetlight provides, and some of those services are reduction in crime, increase, you know, livability and safety, et cetera. So undeveloped parcels aren't charged properly, if we had blocks without streetlights, they would not be charged. And, and I asked today, actually, I asked finances, like, well, well, where do we have blocks? And nobody could really honestly, um, think of them. But what we started talking about is if we had a developer build a neighborhood and there was a supply chain issue in getting streetlights and people lived in that, in that neighborhood before the streetlights were installed.
Until they got them.
Correct, again, we can't, we can't recover expenses for what we didn't provide in the first place. Um, we also can, and, and understanding recovering expenses doesn't mean we're only recovering for if you have a streetlight on your parcel. Um, what the, what, what the law allows us to do is look at the, the totality of the benefit to an area, to a district or whatever it may be. So, so I have a streetlight next to my house, actually, um, but my neighbors, you know, that run up the street from me, don't. But they get the benefit of having well-lit sidewalks around the periphery. So, um, also, we do not believe under current legal opinion and case law that we can charge state-owned, um, parcels for their unmetered streetlights. I put that number in there, seventy-five hundred, cause we believe that's the value of what's, um, UWRF and CVTC is essentially getting out of the street, the, the streetlights in the, along the street right of way. That, that we do not believe currently we can charge them for. It is important to point out, all their pedestrian pathway lighting on campus, they do pay for, um, through their electric bills.
So you're saying that even if we do this, that we still can't charge the university?
We, correct.
I thought that's why we were doing this.
I can't speak to why, cause I don't think I was privy to, you know, at the time. You know, one of the, one of the reasons that a fee was desired was to have more properties paying for it, which would include school district properties, the hospital. Not for, like tax exempt.
Tax exempt. Church estate.
So today, our residential properties pretty much cover about seventy-five percent of the cost to provide street lighting. Under this model, we believe that would reduce to sixty-five percent, so it does spread that burden some.
So it does healthy individual property.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's all I care to know, cause then I can say.
Yes.
I've had people complain about this already.
Oh, yeah, so your bill's going down.
It works like the transportation utility fee, way of just across the top for everybody. I had, I had an email last night from a resident browsing about this oddly enough too.
I think we all got it.
Yeah.
I think we all got it.
It's, we, we don't think we can charge?
So there, the, was Office of the Attorney General, State Attorney General issued a legal opinion some years ago that, that communities are using as the basis, um, that indicates because the state is, state of Wisconsin is not expressly named in this statute that allows for the charge, that, that the state cannot be charged. And then there's since, there's since been a case law where, um, an appeals court indicated they would agree with that attorney general's opinion. And so nobody has challenged it yet.
So we can't just go ahead and try it and see?
Well, interestingly enough, Scott and I talked yesterday and I said.
I'm all for it.
I said, try it. Somebody just needs to try and see if it gets challenged.
See if they even notice.
Yeah, I mean, we, I, we also even if this is the methodology that's adopted, we would, we would ask them to, to pay it.
We can't ask them to do a pilot.
Well, yeah, let's just do a pilot, say, hey. I also think there's there's something to be said about charging it, because this attorney general opinion is quite outdated, nineteen eighty. And that was based on the law of land at that time, so.
Maybe if all those people are getting their butt kicked by the Rice Lake decision, do you think they're really going to try to go back to the well again?
Well, I, I.
Have any state-owned land?
Yeah, I think this would be like this. Right, Rice Lake, this was a very big deal on Rice Lake, because they had some state facilities for bear and some other things, and, um, I think that, in that case, the university or the county, whatever, said they weren't going to pay it and challenged it, so it's, it's disappointing, because it doesn't provide as much relief to a single residential homeowner as it would have. But on the other hand, it's seventy-five hundred out of the two, two hundred and four hundred thousand, so. And, and that's largely due to the fact that we have a bunch of metered lighting on the campus that they are paying for already, so it's not, not lighting we're paying for currently to get recovery. The other strategy that I've thought about, we want to just think about our partnership and equity and fairness and all of that, one of the things was to review the lights that to see if any of the other lights should go from un-metered streetlights to a specific metered light that's more pri- what we would consider a private purpose light. Um, and in that case, it would just show up on their electric bill, not, not streetlight. We wouldn't be recovering that fee then. So does that answer that question?
Yeah.
That's how I, I do remember, I remember that that was part of the, the reason to do that. I think that's preserved from practical standpoint. But it's, it takes a little bit of the percentage shift. You still have all the, if you remember, the churches and that, that came and said, I want to pay this. That preserves all that. With the specific exception of state only and.
So we know that our, uh, total O and M cost annually for streetlights in cities, two hundred and fourteen thousand, and, and we know how many we have. So we do the division to come to a hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents per streetlight, um, to maintain. And, and, and that comes into play as we then get into kind of the math exercise to set what the rates may be, so. So what we're going to propose in a fee, um, the streetlight recovery fee schedule that would come to you formally as council in resolution, via resolution, would be this methodology that establishes a residential equivalent unit. Um, the residential, um, being the baseline piece, and then, uh, I'll talk a little bit in a second about the other categories, a multi-residential, commercial, industrial, that builds off of there. So, so I guess we look at it as we have to kind of determine the baseline for the residential customer of how this, of what math needs to be done to cover the costs, so we start with the fact, so we, we map out the city. I did not bring those maps, I'm happily to provide those, but we use GIS technology to map out and look at the city, um, and look at those zones of resi- residential, commercial, industrial, and literally counting streetlights that fall within those areas. And so for fam- for the residential zone, we know there's five hundred and forty-nine lights. There's a hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents a light, so they cost ninety-two thousand dollars annually within the family residential, single-family residential zone cost. So then we take that ninety-two thousand and we divide it by the amount of, um, the the foot, the, the length to determine a cost per foot per zone, and that gives us twenty-eight, twenty-six cents per foot. So then we want to look at the, um, average linear foot per unit. And so that is the, um, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which is the feet, divided by the number of residential meter units, which gives us.
People, houses?
Meter basis.
Oh.
Meter basis, so, so.
Here.
So like, some people have two meter accounts, Kevin West's house, I think, has two meters.
I have two.
Two accounts.
Okay.
So, so his gets counted twice, those that, the.
Okay, I see what you mean, okay.
Um, and then we take that ninety-six feet and multiply it times the twenty-six cents per foot to come up with the cost per unit per year, twenty-four ninety-six, and in this case, we're recommending rounding it down um, for the, either math when you're looking at a year, you know, of, of twelve months. Um, and, and it does cover the expense. So one of the things the state statute is pretty clear, is we can't just set arbitrary rates, it has to be reasonably tied to the expense of providing that service, um, which is why we have to kind of go through these steps to get there. And so for a REU, what we're, what we're calling a REU residential equivalent unit of one, which is a baseline house, um, typical house with one meter, it's two dollars per month, so twenty-four dollars. And so from there, we then kind of do the backwards math of figure out how much, you know, it, it costs to provide those lights to, to the other zones, and what we need to set those REUs at. And so that, that table there gives you an idea of what, um, sort of monthly charge those types of customers would be facing.
So just so I understand that, so the, right now, they're just being paid through levy?
Yes.
Okay, so that, can we demonstrate the, the cost savings to the customer then, or no?
I think, I think in fairness, Scott, Scott, help me out here, but I think what's, I, I, I think the, the correct response is we can, this allows us to avoid this expense on the levy, but we've already accounted for that levy being used elsewhere.
But I think your question, if I wonder, if I'm hearing correctly, is what is the levy per month on average they're paying now through their taxes? So yes, we can, we can calculate that.
It's just a curiosity thing.
Yeah, so it would be so what I'm hearing from you is you'd want that as part of your decision-making to make sure.
Well.
One of the reasons that you, we talked about doing this was some equity.
Hard for people to argue about the two dollars a month, although that number was, I mean, that's not a big number, but are they saving an hour a month?
Oh.
Nine dollars a month now, and it's going down to two because of.
What did their, what did their streetlight burden like as a portion of their property taxes? Yeah, we can calculate that, because you take, you take the levy from residential property, similar to that sheet he had before.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I can tell people the truth, you're actually saving money.
Yeah, if you subtract the ones who weren't paying in, you save a considerable amount.
Right.
So I think you have, I'll do the, do the math.
So I'll just be an advocate, I guess, to say saving compared to if you were paying by levy.
Right.
But there's no savings, right? We, we increased the levy and we're adding the fee, but we would have had, if you wanted, if you would have wanted to provide the same level of service, you would have had to raise the levy more.
Correct.
So I. Which I know you all understand, but I just, I'm not, I don't want to on your behalf go to the public and say we're saving them money on resident, single-family residential house on average. I think we can show you the math, and it's likely going to, it would have been a bigger burden for them to do levy than. And then they can determine if they think that's significant or not, because that's the other thing people have said to me is, oh, would I save significantly more? And I'm like, well, I, I don't for you, what is significant, is it a dollar a year less?
How are you small, well, no.
Ten dollars less? Because it will be something, we, we moved about ten percent of the cost migrated it away from the single-family residential.
Well, this, this is maybe way more fair than the way it's been done.
But it also allows, and again, I, if you remember, I was, I think I was about neutral on whether or not this was going to, at two hundred thousand, it's right on the edge of if it's worth transferring levy. Now, in Wisconsin with levy caps, I think there's a lot more sense to do this, but also, one of the benefits of a recovery fee is that it demonstrate, people have a bill says this is what you're paying for this service. And so then they can make a determination specifically on street lighting, is it worth two dollars a month for you to have streetlights? And if you get to a point where sixty percent of the people in your community are like, I don't want to pay two dollars a month for streetlights, it's not worth it. Then you can, then you can make a determination. Or it also helps you with scope, like, um, you may find that people, I think this is probably the case, you're going to find people want more streetlight, and they're going to say, I want, you know, this corner isn't lighted enough, and I, I have to walk so many feet, over one and into the other, because we space our lights pretty good. You can say, yep, that's a po- policy option for you, but that would cost X, X dollars more per month, is it worth it to you or not? So we can, we will both calculate that, um, and then again, we can, we can determine what the Wayback Machine had for estimating on UW, see how much different it is than the, the current. I suspect that CBTC is more inclined to voluntarily pay the fee. I think that's a, that would be a decision their board would probably make. I, UWRF, I, there is no local board to make that decision. It'd be a system thing, and I think they probably try to draw a line, potentially. So we'll have to see how that goes.
So, so I kind of put up there what we're projecting for year, first, for the first full year of implementation. Um, I did, if the intent is this will operate as its own fund and be managed as such, as such. Um, you all would revisit the proposed fee schedule every time we bring the general fee schedule to you, um, which is typically an annual process, if, if not annual, biennial, it may fall just because of how it lapses, but, but on a regularly occurring frequency, um, this would be kind of subjected to review to make sure that the costs are still aligned with the, with, the fares are still aligned with the cost to provide the services. Um, this does.
Finish your thought.
No, I was just going to say, this does, we, we are projected for year one to create a contingency within this fund of about sixteen thousand, and, and Josh and I have been spending some time talking about that, some of that has to do with just kind of working with even numbers and the math, and working to the advantage of the fund, um, because we have somewhat of a concern that streetlight costs are going to go up, so we're, we're essentially building in a little bit of coverage for increased costs as those materials go up.
How does it work charging perks? That's a cons- conservancy card.
Charging ourselves.
Are we charging the perk of this city, the perk budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Including our, we'll also pay for our property for the streetlights, for our front, our, our portion for lighting of City Hall and other places.
Is there a strategic plan around lighting in the city, or?
It's a great question. You don't, I, I I think the answer is no, and the reason I say it's a great question, it's actually, um, utilities and con dev are actually work, kind of working on that behind the scenes now.
Yeah.
Of trying to establish kind of a, a thought-out and well-planned streetlight implement strategy, thank you.
So we have a general city engineer spec, so there, or, it's not called spec, um, well, yeah, I guess it is. Yeah, it's best. So there's a minimum standard for spacing when they, when a developer comes in and does development. But they can do more. They can do fancier lights, and so that's to, to Jason's answering your question. We haven't had a real discussion about saying no to people, like, there's, if we had a strategy, we would say, we don't want those, because it's going to cost us that much to maintain them. You know, you need to give us something, there needs to be more of an impact fee or something for our development to do that.
I, I would say, just from my own experience, I think parts of, and I also like believe light pollution is an issue. So saying that, there are parts of the downtown corridor that are really dark at night, um. I don't know if it's ever been a safety issue or things like that, but.
It's retrofitted into an old parabolic, and it doesn't kick the light.
Well, in fairness, we've heard that from some of our own staff as, as a transitional parking lot at night.
Yeah.
Like, like, some parking lots are known to be a little darker than other, and, and so that is something, when we talk about utilities and con dep, looking at that, that is what they're looking at.
Okay.
Not only style, but lumin, or whatever the right term would be, the brightness.
Be great to look at that instead of, I think. We've already started.
I could see that being, we're going to get into the street.
So kind of where we're at as staff and, and looking for a little, I guess, um.
I have a question here, and I'm sorry for asking it. If I'm the school district, and tomorrow I get wise and put on a system that dims down my lights when no one's in my parking lot at midnight, which to best my knowledge, they do not have at all, would that change their impact?
No, because those are not our streetlights.
Okay, fair enough, okay, just to make sure, yep.
Those, those are, those are.
They belong to district, yep.
Those are on the building, the meter for that property.
Yeah, okay, yep.
I've operated back when we first, years and years and years ago, looked at streetlights, that forty-nine percent of the properties are paying a hundred percent of the, of the cost, does that number change? Is that still a right number? Other fifty-one percent of our properties are not in our tax rolls?
It's probably changed, so we should, you know, update a number.
Give me an updated number, please, because I quoted that last night in my response to my email, and I probably should have been careful.
So I've got some ideas of additional data you're going to want as you consider this. Um, so I think where staff is, is at and prepared to go is to bring this in front of council, um, in June, and, which would include a resolution with adoption of, and implementation of the fee schedule, as I mentioned, and then it would go, the fee would be effective in July. And it's important to point out, because as I mentioned, we built the twenty-three, this half of the twenty-three budget, or I guess you could say the whole budget, based on a hundred and five thousand of streetlight revenue, with the basic assumption of half a year's worth of revenue. And so if that doesn't happen, we, we just have to make adjustments then, and, and kind of relook at that. I think, um, if I'm remembering workshops and retreats correctly, and certainly Scott will wave me off if, if I'm not supposed to do this, but I think it's okay to seek straw poll consensus from the council, right? Like, does anybody hold up stop signs?
Yeah, actually, they could, they wouldn't be able to approve fee structure, but this is an approved meeting, so they can.
Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful to, to know if there's, if, if there's any stop signs or, or.
We already did this exercise in a workshop, we're, we're, and our heads not the same way after.
Yep, yep, it's, it's.
I think the last thing.
This is an additional checkpoint to, to make sure.
So we're putting suspenders upon our suspenders?
Yeah.
Okay, just to make sure.
I would recommend, uh, and, and I think this process, that's right. We're just going to need, um, a good communication strategy. Because honestly, listening to this meeting with lots of smart people, it feels kind of complex. I feel so, when that information goes out to the public, it can be easily misconstrued, and we become, well, what's the point? Why are you, right?
And, and.
Other new tax.
Yep.
Speed, I made this statement at a couple of workshops, I was here when we first implemented this, it didn't pass. Uh, and I don't remember what year it was, two thousand and ten, didn't pass. Uh, it was a much more complex method, but it's going to take a little intestinal fortitude from this group to stand behind this and, and, and understand it and advocate for it, because people are gonna, you know, one of the arguments I heard from somebody was, well, I'd rather have it on my taxes, and I can deduct it, you know, I'd rather have it on my proper taxes, I can deduct it. Well, if you got a business, it's an expense that's going on your business, it's coming off anyway. So it, it's good, we're going to get pushback, you need to be prepared.
We just need numbers, that's all.
Okay. So I guess Scott, Urban National Housing Fund study. I calculated some of the numbers, but I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to double-check them with my finance director, but.
He's in Europe.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's about to take off here.
So we can, he's, he's relaxing, enjoying, so we can increase his workload?
Yeah.
Everybody except John.
All right, um, I don't know if you all have the chance to, I'm not, this is not a poll, so don't answer the question, you don't have to keep yourself up if you haven't read the memo, but, um,
because you haven't had a whole lot of time, so the, the point, um, the point of the discussion on the agenda here going into our dinner break is to give you some things to look for in the memo. And then I do want to ask you to talk as a group, time dependent on, there's three questions that the finance director poses, policy questions that he is suggesting that the council could consider. Um, and I'm gonna ask you to talk about one of those tonight and then we'll come back with that later in a later time, so I'll just kind of summarize some of the things that were in the memo and then we'll get to that discussion, so. This is part of our ongoing review of funds, I've asked the finance director to, to kind of methodically go through our funds. He and I have agreed on a couple of funds each year, each period. Um, we want to set some memorandums up so that we have both the history, you know, getting back to the sixty-seven percent of our staff have been in their position for less than seven years. I want to start creating some documentation so that, you know, kind of like Ask Merlin or something, whenever they have a question, they're coming to me and I'll be saying, well, what did we do on this? So we want to get this stuff documented, but then also raise any policy questions that we think are appropriate to raise, or let the council bring up their own questions or policy questions to raise, so we did the environmental fee and now the housing fund. So this fund, we believe the origins are basically the nineteen eighty-eight pass through River Glenns, that's kind of the origin of how we had some money designated loosely for housing. And in ninety-five, then they actually established a fund on our books as this loan that was started to be repaid to the city, so we were essentially got a federal grant, passed that through to River Glenn, to the housing authority, and then as they were making repayments, and that money is what we would call de-federalized. And that's common practice for, for HUD money is they give the money out, they used to give quite a bit of it out for community development block grant revolving loan funds, that was one of the big things they did. Is they'd fund a project and then as that project paid them one back, they paid back to the city or the entity and then the city or entity keep that funds to then put it back out with the thought that the feds then will be able to step out of that and have it kind of, they don't have to do any administration and take care of it. Um, and that's kind of how this is for housing. So in twenty nineteen, that loan was paid off, so the, the original original, original, um, purpose I, we think for this was that when I say that, it's because there is no, there was, in nineteen ninety-five, when the housing fund was established, there isn't a resolution or anything we that we easily located. We didn't do a whole bunch of extensive research in minutes from the council meeting, trying to determine what the mayor and the council were thinking at the time. We, we believe it likely was an administrative cash, um, management account for it, show transparency, again, all this stuff is audited every year, this is, it's not like it was put in some back door that nobody could see. Um, but that's, that's what we think happened to get this started. And so then we were approached. There may be some activity that occurred in between, but, but the easiest activity to locate through research was the loan to our neighbor's place. At the time, they came to us, they had a business plan, I helped them revise the business plan because they wanted the city to provide, they had heard that we had this, they had read our audited financials and said, hey, the city's got a housing fund, let's go get some money from the city. Um, and so they came looking for, to, this was to buy, um, I think it's a four unit, might be a three unit.
It's a four, four unit? It was a Johnson Street property, if I remember right.
No, this is, they were gonna buy something on Johnson and they ended up buying just a couple of blocks from City Hall.
I always thought it was.
Yeah, Johnson's another one.
Another one down below.
So this, this original loan in two thousand eleven was to buy a four, four unit. It's by our well, our water well there, um, I can't think of the name of the street.
Cedar.
Cedar?
It's on Cedar, it was Dave Hennessy's property.
So we helped them purchase that and they still today use that for transitional family housing and that's, they paid off in twenty thirteen. So at the time, the council agreed to loan it out of this housing fund and it was then paid back into the housing fund. So when it says paid off, the, our neighbor's place paid off their loan from the city in twenty thirteen. Twenty twelve, we made another loan. The council had directed staff to, to work with St. Cray Valley Habitat for Humanity to help close out and finish their project and part of that was a four hundred thousand dollar loan. They had some further trouble and we modified the terms of the original loan, um, in twenty seventeen to an interest free, as long as payments are made on time, they currently have a balance, um, above under a hundred and thirty thousand. And the final scheduled payment for that is twenty twenty seven.
And they've stayed on track?
They have, yep, since that twenty seventeen renegotiation, um. Then twenty seventeen, affordable housing extension for TIDS became law in Wisconsin, so that was they're allowing councils to extend the life of a TID by one year if the ex- increment from that extended life is used for housing. Affordable housing, I don't know the lan- I think in the memo it says the exact language, but generally speaking, affordable housing.
And Scott, that doesn't, that's not required to be within a half mile of the existing TID boundary like the other?
It is not.
Okay.
So the council approved in TID four, um, the last year of increment when they closed it to go to the Housing Reserve Fund.
Which was TID four?
That's, uh, the original River Falls Industrial Park.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that was five. Too many TIDS.
I'll have to look that one up. I think it might be River Fall, I thought it was River Falls Industrial Park original TID. And then twenty-one, we did a loan to our neighbor's.
Jason, can you?
Oh, Jason screwed it. Can you look that one up? I think it's on our website. Um, and then twenty twenty-one, the loan, another loan to our neighbor's place. At the time, they had zero balance, they had paid off their, excuse me, loan. And that was to purchase one twenty-two West Johnson.
That's, that's the, that's really Dick's prime.
That's their headquarters.
Yeah. Across the court, yeah.
So that's a two percent loan. And that's a lo- that's a twenty year, so they've got quite a balance on that still. And then, um, twenty twenty-two, you approved as part of the Lake George Lofts development in advance and that's we're advancing because they're using that incentive to maintain affordable, so many units at a certain price of, based on, um, county median income. So two hundred thousand went out there. So this is the twenty, showing kind of a, a year there, so we have both the original money. Oh, it's Whitetail. No, that's River, River Falls Industrial Park, right?
Was it?
Yeah.
Well, Whitetail's fine.
Good. Thought that's what we're doing. Um, so thirty-four thousand revenues and, and then we had those loans that went out. So for that year, that's what it looked like. We currently have four hundred and sixty-some thousand in cash investments in there and then we, we are owed on those two liabilities, so the two liabilities, let's see, three liabilities, so there's a balance here from St. Cray Valley, a balance here from our neighbors and a balance from the TID, the TID owes. The TID is the one that borrowed the money. So that's, that's where these notes receivable are, so we have you know, the fund is basically a little under a million at this point.
Could you go back two days or so? So you had a hundred and thirty, three hundred, that's forty, forty plus another two hundred, that's five hundred and thirty, right? Six hundred and thirty.
And then the two hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Yeah, I don't know what the dates he's got here, though.
The balances, the balances were a twenty-one balance.
This is FY twenty-one, so there's probably some adjustments.
That's fair.
But you're right to point out that the math should add up, but I think we're looking at two different. So the three things that the finance director and I have outlined in the memo are for the council to consider is do you, do you want to? See, I don't have that. This is just the revenue option, so revenue sources we've got. He identifies that the HUD grant money, so the original six hundred thousand, we believe that that does not need to stay in the housing fund. The council could make a policy decision to use that for whatever they think is a priority of the city. Because essentially, when that came back from loan payments, it did not need to go into a housing fund, it did not need to be used for affordable housing. Staff was following what we thought was the the wishes of the council until you tell us differently. But from an audit and legal and financing, that money is available, so the council.
Generally, we can use it anywhere.
It can go right to the general fund. So that's the one thing I want to talk about today, but before we get to that, I want to talk about the other, the other two things that are brought up, so one is, should we be making the assumption that we're gonna continue this practice of affordable housing extensions for the Housing Reserve Fund, which I think is a bigger question? And so I didn't think we'd have time to talk too much about that today. And then you know, how are we going to, do we want to set a policy, basically, for the expenditure? On the expenditure side, does the council want to form a policy that says you can use this fund for these purposes, because right now we've used it for low to moderate income residents for, for our partners, our neighbor's place in St. Cray Valley. We've used it for inter-fund loans now. Um, we can use it for housing studies or similar efforts, if we do affordability stuff, we can use it for that. We can use it for a mix of any of those and there's probably other uses that we haven't used it for yet that would be eligible to use it under law. We don't have a formal policy, so essentially you're, you're, right now, the way it's left is the the staff is using our discretion based on our understanding of what we think the council wants to do as it's outlined in studies. So we believe you've created a pattern where you're willing in market rate housing developments to invest some money in to bring down some units. We've done that without any formal policy, we don't have a certain amount per unit, we don't have a certain amount if you reduce. Three times now, the council has approved a loan, a low or no interest loan to a community partner under the category of affordable housing, um, or housing, housing, um, support with our neighbor's place. Um, and then you just approved the inter-fund loan, so we believe that that's something you're willing to do, but there's no policy that you've set, so much like we did where for the environmental fee fund, we could draw up a policy that you can debate, pass and set a path forward on the expenditure side.
The thing what we, what, you know, which is, she showed us that we've been doing with it, we've been doing all the right things with it, as far as I'm concerned, but, but I mean, like you said, we've been using it for development, for keeping the cost for so many units down, or we've been neighbor, our neighbor, you know, whether it's neighbor's place or any other somebody in town that needs it for stuff like that. I, I personally, I think what we, what you've been doing is good, if you can draw something up along those lines, for me, that'd be.
Well. One potential is we need all the windows in one of our buildings and we have money to put at the housing authority.
We, we could, you could, you could. Yeah, if the housing authority made a request to the city, we could, we could do no interest or you could even do grant funding out of this fund. Under the current policy, lack of policy, we probably would have a discussion with the housing authority and see if there's something we can figure out, but we would all be operating under no, no real guidelines, it might be whatever we find, whatever the housing authority board and the council finds reasonable.
So do you want us to talk about what we do with the HUD money now?
Uh, so my intention, so if I were to follow my presentation, these are the three follow-up questions that were succinctly put together. So I think we need to, at some point, the council should have a discussion with staff about should we continue assuming that we're gonna extend these increments for affordable housing, because we need to do some projections about what the revenue looks like if we want to be serious about this. Should, the second question is, should the city establish this formal policy? And then the last question, which I would like to talk about today, if the council will have it, is do you want us to start figuring out this HUD thing? Should, is it something you want us to consider transferring money to the general fund or is there some consensus already that no, leave it in the housing fund and that's what we want, we don't want to mess with it? And if that's the direction, we're okay with that, but we want to let you know, because that's the findings of this review, that money doesn't have the strings that we may have thought were attached to it or that we had been. I actually have a little surprise by that, to be honest with you.
It's probably been so long, though. I personally think that, that we should continue to use it for the purpose that we got it. You know, because it gives us, uh, it gives us options, um, to, to help finance or grease the skids for affordable housing that we otherwise wouldn't have. And it's, would it just be a one-time flip in the general fund?
I agree with Diane, I think, I think we, we all want to come up with an answer for affordable housing and we can't, I mean, it's, it's not an easy answer.
Subsidies, all you can do.
And all you can do is subsidies, I think if we're able to help the citizens understand, hey, we're not gonna build a, a low-income housing unit, that's, that's not the business we're in. But we can help support these activities, right, through different things. Special use permits, the housing fund, I think the fund needs to stay there and needs to be something that we can demonstrate to the public of, hey, we are committed to figuring out housing issues for the low income.
A little bit at times.
For workforce income, but this is what we're doing.
I would agree with that and like, I've been to about twenty-one different classes that have been offered to the municipal, uh, HUD and different various groups. Momentum West is now one of them. And like, one of the biggest key components that's always missing from housing plans and why people say there's no silver bullet is you need to find a contractor who can meet these needs, so you really need to isolate. You say you have like A, B, C, D, and E, and you figure out the one that you need the most is density. Well, then you need to figure out a plan that is very specific, specific and to the point with your housing study that meets the hardest to get demographics and it's not gonna happen overnight, but then you have to seek out that contractor who can work with the city and develop a relationship where you, maybe you do one of these per year and you have some of that money in that fund to help move, move it along in a, in a bigger strategy over time.
As the fund, I agree wholeheartedly with what everyone said so far and I also agree that we should continue the tack during the additional year to put more money in there. My other question that some cities do and I, I, I almost positively don't, but with homeownership and affordable homeownership, do we have a fund for families that are, you know, middle, lower income who own their homes where they have major expenses that they could get a low-interest loan from the city through this to like replace their windows or their pipes or some, you know, something big that they might not be able to afford on their own, but would get some help from the city?
We, we aren't running that, there's, there are cities that have CDBG entitlement funds primarily. So the, the list of entitlement communities that get money directly from HUD.
Okay.
A lot of them have, um, what they call it, but basically emergency repair funds or kind improve your block funds, porches are a big one in a lot of cities where they, you know, the porches are structurally on sound and they come and fix the front porch so that that's one of the more visible programs around the country. Um, so we don't have that program, West Cap has something, um, along that lines, so depending on their poverty level, they can qualify for, for West Cap programs in, in our area, but, um, and we did the Rock the Block with St. Cray Valley Habitat, which was intended to be similar. and we did the Rock the Block with St. Croix Valley Habitat, which was intended to be similar. They did some rehab. Instead of building a new home for somebody, they had a program where they did a few houses. Um, I don't remember the addresses. They had like a couple in New Richmond, a couple here, and a couple in Hudson that they did. And the idea was just that, like, let's keep somebody in their own. But that would be on the expenditure side for your formal policy. The council can determine if that's something they want to do. I think it'd be eligible within this.
Would we be better equipped to do that if we had a CDA? Or does that not matter?
I, I think, I think the answer is probably yes. Housing Authority has some ability to do that now, but I don't know why you'd ask them to take, I don't know why you'd ask them to take on more responsibility.
They can't, yeah.
No. The housing, I believe the housing authority in a couple cities in Wisconsin, they run those programs on behalf of the city, but again, they're getting entitlement money from this, like, I think the city of Boyd is one of my hometowns, where they give money. This is how they used to do it, so they might not, this might not be accurate, but, you know, they basically take some of their entitlement and they give it to the housing authority, who then uses this homeowner assistance, down payment, whatever program on behalf of the city. But I don't know that, I, I know that our housing authority isn't staffed or.
Well, they're not equipped for you to do that.
Would we need to apply? I'm just logistically effing. Do we need to apply to be part of that grant program from HUD in order to do that? Like, how, does that want to add more staff?
Yeah, the entitlement program was, uh,
Time for.
Nixon-era direct money to cities, and that whole list was established, and we worked on it and get on it.
Oh, okay.
So all the CDBG money that we would get for those kind of things would have to come through the state. So non-entitlement communities all have to go to the state and do competitive grants for it, which they do have. I mean, the state has grants to set up revolving loan funds and home buyer assistance, and, um, it's not been a priority for us as a city to try to kind of run a housing, run that part of the business. So we've, we focused on lesser complexity, higher impact partnerships, so, um, and that's probably not a fair way to say, because in a one-on-one relationship with a homeowner, it's still going to be high impact, but we've just tried to work with partners because they already have the reach, they already have the network, they already have the email list, they already have the contacts from the the community that we don't have. So, I'm, what I'm hearing.
Well, citizens reach out to us about that, and we have the contacts available.
Yeah, we'll help for, but I don't, I don't think people should assume that there's a robust program for residents of River Falls. There's some programs on the fringes.
I think philosophically, we've got to decide if we want to help onesie-twosies, or if we want to help bigger.
So, so I'm hearing, I think if I'm hearing correctly, there's some satisfaction with what we're doing, but not really any dissatisfaction with what we've already sprung. There sounds like there's some questions about what would this look like, and should there be some guardrails? Although I don't hear a lot of people saying, "We got to push this as a priority to have a formal policy right away." On the revenue side, I'm hearing that there's some interest in TID extensions, and that there isn't, generally speaking, you're not looking to grab that six hundred thousand and spend it on the fire station or something else.
I see.
I see. Now, you can do that, too.
I, I think when you look at this, you got to really work it into a plan with the housing, what we're doing, and then try to target our housing study with our approach.
So is there consensus by the council, and it's okay if there's not, at this point, because you haven't all read and highlighted and done whatever. But I don't hear anybody saying, "Leave this room today, Scott, and assume you should use that six hundred thousand in CIP" for something else.
No, correct.
Legal risk. So, you know, if we, if we decide to go down the road, yep, from now on, every district or for every TID we're going to close, we're going to leave it open for that extra year to get that money into this fund. Do we, do we have to go to the other taxing jurisdiction? Do we do it, would we, would we do it now while we're making the, the decision to do that in writing? Or would that be something we go to, okay, we're coming to the end of TID, TID number four, and we want, we want to extend it another year? Or is this going to, we going to set it up so it's already going to, we already know we're going to extend it a year?
Well, you can't automatically do it. So then it's a question of how we want to nurture the relationship with, with the JRB. So, I mean, you can make an argument that if the council, you haven't, but if you pass a formal policy that says you're going to, you're hoping to rely on TID extension to fund these initiatives, it makes sense to me to be transparent with the partners.
Right, right, right.
They should be on.
Just, just so you know, our thought is that this is a twenty-one-year TID.
Right, not twenty.
Not twenty, and this is our plan, and yes, we'll come back to you, and you have the right to say no, but this is what we're doing. And that's why the Finance Director in the memo, you'll see, he's not counting any revenue. Like, he's not saying, "Well, if I project out Man Valley, and then take the last year of increment, we're going to have a million dollars to spend on housing." He was saying, "This is what we have today. The value of our TIDS is this much. If you, if you want to do an estimate based on current value, here's how much you could free up for housing." State lock and change. People's opinions about this could change. Councils, because you can't bind a future council on this, you can provide a, a policy with a direction.
I think one thing with the, if we do create a formal policy, I think any, any loans coming out of that fund need to, loans or inter-fund loans need to be directly related to housing affordability and how, like, it, I think we should keep it kind of like Diane said, with the intent of what it was originally created for, was to help with creating low and moderate affordable housing for people and not use it as a, and I don't think you are, um, but like as a slush fund for extra money to go here and there. I don't, and I don't think you're doing that. I just say with that policy, we should keep it for what it was intended for.
So housing in a generic sense is what you're saying?
Yep, and we just wanted to make your point in public that even though we are all operating under that's what the intent was for, we actually don't see a stated intent by the council at the time, and the laws of the, the way that money comes in and how de-federalization. It's, it's a policy decision you made. It's not something I think when they originally won the river, necessarily. In fact, because I'm of that vintage and was starting to work in local government back in the nineties, most cities were doing those, they were getting those grants from HUD for the sole purpose to use it for the initial purpose and then de-federalize the money and free it up for the general fund. So, um, the fact that we didn't just shows that we had some discipline, or they just might have, you know, this may be the first time that councils are aware, oh, we can spend that on something else. But what I'm hearing you say is that's irrelevant because the momentum's already there. Let's just.
I like what Councilmember Beerstedt said, and like, but in a sense of, you know, helping our, our housing authority, but we can just have it in what we call just the housing fund, generic, right? Just to be clear about that.
Yep, and in the short term, what I heard is you may be willing to have expenditure beyond what we're doing now, and so then I would say to our rep on the housing authority, if you have good ways to preserve affordable housing, a low-interest loan might help. A loan might not help you, but it might.
If the year one, no interest.
Oh, but we, I think we've got, wow, I think we've got twenty so far.
So that's good. So I hope that, I got what I was hoping to get out of this conversation. Any last words, Mayor, on the housing fund? So it takes some time to read the memo, and then we will try to determine a strategy of staff of what to bring in front of you.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we will be waiting to hear from the council on a future workshop or whatever that, hey, remember we talked about this? We really, it's time for you to bring us, we want this now. Bring, bring something forward. We can start working informally on drafting of the policies, to try to see what it looks like.
Just do that. Perfect.
And then I don't have a preview of what's the next fund, because we, Finance Director and I need to kind of look at our funds to see what's next. But you can expect, try to keep doing these as, as time allows.
We could look at the dog license fund that one person has every year.
Well, it must be. At least two of us in there. You would definitely pay our thing. Before we go to legislative update, I did want to recognize Kristy, too, here. She's here to report the minutes and have dinner with us, too, I guess, hopefully.
Doing a phenomenal job.
So what we're going to do is, you know, who is ready?
It's ready.
So let's, let's, um, do you want to recess? Maybe we should recess hard till a certain time. How much time would you like to have for the presentation part?
You were doing the part, but.
Passing the buck or?
So how about, what is the council's preference? Do you want to just grab your food and get right to it, or do you want to have a few minutes to eat and take a ten-minute or fifteen?
Five or ten minutes, you said.
About ten minutes. Okay, so, so I can start presenting at five thirty.
So there's food in the break room, and there are old. So I can start off with the legislative update, um, on May twenty-third, so last week. Amy Peterson and I went to Madison and met with our legislators, or to be more precise, with their staff.
Yeah.
Other than Zimmerman. Um, and I would say that we, our experience with them was that they have a strong awareness of the initiatives that you've set forth, a strong interest in them, and, um, a strong willingness to continue to develop a relationship so that, um, and keep your initiatives at the top of their mind. So that was the impression that we received. I did bring the, um, initiative brochure with them, so they have this in hand. Um, and I will be following up this week on a few questions that they had. So that was, I think, a very positive meeting with them. In particular, I think a little bit of advancement that we made, that we made is that Representative Petrick meets with, um, or speaks to Van Orden multiple times a week. We've been trying to get Van Orden to come and, um, do a tour of the fire station. And it's been difficult to get his staff to respond to me for those requests, so Petrick's staff said that they would try to push that along so that we can coordinate a tour and get Van Orden out here to actually see what we're talking about, see what the needs are for our fire station. So that was positive. And that's going to be important as we're looking at the fact that the funding for the fire station has been set in the House Appropriations Committee, was set at one point four million, which is significantly less than what we have indicated of what our need is. So it's going to be important that we have strong communication with the team at all those offices. Um, and Richard Mack and Perry have been very on top of that. So they're helping us in DC to make sure that we're at the top of their minds.
Oh, Jennifer, I'm sorry, just, you say one point four? And not four point four, like we thought?
Correct.
Correct. Now, that's not where it stops.
No, I get it.
Yeah, but that's where it landed in the House Appropriation.
So, I assume there's a time period connected to that one point four? That would even span that way?
Um, there is, but it's, it's, um, within the mine, you know. So we'd have to keep going, but once you're, what they, what federal government wants to see is the spending, so that we start the spending. We don't have it all constructed and done. We have to do like, design and engineering by them.
So that's the concern, is that that's not nearly enough to go to where we can be.
So, um, I'll, I'll get back to that, but, so share revenue is the big thing on the, on the, uh, Wisconsin side. They, A, B. The Legislative Fiscal Bureau has got the formula sheet in five C. We grabbed the town or the falls, not the city. So it's A, B, two, four, five, and then there's a supplemental amendment. So I'm going to try to highlight on this, what we're talking. So what, what passed the Assembly was, fifty-six thirty-six, was a proposal that every community in Wisconsin get a minimum of ten percent increase in shared revenue. There's, there's like four things in the formula, so there, it's the complicated and, and somewhat nonsensical formula has been preserved, but more money was put into the, to the pot. So the result of the original A, B, two, four, five was River Falls, we're at one point ninety um, right now, a million for aid. The supplemental amount of municipal aid is going to be an additional three hundred ninety-seven thousand, which would bring our aid up to two point three seven seven, is a twenty percent increase for us. And that's because there's a minimum per capita and some other things in there that brings our aid up, and because we started higher per capita, so we, we maintain that. It doesn't penalize, doesn't penalize communities that had started with a high amount of municipal aid. It doesn't take that away from you, so to speak, so the base didn't change.
So Hudson will still be there.
I was going to say, I was going to. They absolutely will be.
They're going to have kittens, and who cares?
Yeah, so, again, remember, this is nineteen seventy-six family, right? So it was developed at a time where equalization and, and property values and all kinds of things are different, and it was based on state-owned property, the university being in the city, and the aid payments at the time for that. And so there's all kinds of reasons why different communities had different amounts of money. If they had a state fish, you know, hatchery, and then they got more money. If they had that state forest land, they might have got a different amount of money. So, but they're not changing, the, the formula isn't really changing. What they're saying is they're going to take one, one fifth, or one, one fifth, one cent out of the five cent sales tax, put it in a trust fund for municipal aid. And that is, when you add that all in, and this is the result of that formula. So, um, for example, in this first bill in St. Croix County, City of Hudson, um, would have an increase of three hundred sixty-seven thousand. So that's a two hundred twenty-eight percent increase. So they're one of the, they, they're one of the communities in Wisconsin that got, you know, a five percent increase because the formula was trying to, to bring them up, so, um, the governor came out right away and said, "I don't, I don't like it. I'm not passing it. I'm going to throw it out." So then there was a rush to try to make an amendment. So amendment came through, and that created a minimum of fifteen percent increase in shared revenue for everybody. So there's a new, so that meant we got a little bit more. Find the supplemental sheet. That's the original one. So, so the new number for us is four hundred thirty-four thousand increase, so about twenty-two percent increase. So that potentially, as it sits right now, as amended, um, the city would in additional four hundred thirty-four thousand in shared revenue. Going forward. Going forward. So it's set our new shared revenue number at about two point four million. So.
In those funds, I'm sorry to sound ignorant on this, but those funds can be used where?
So, right now, the funds can be used wherever. So right now, the funds can be used wherever the council feels they're best used. But, but the new funds are, we have to, we're gonna, I'm sure there's gonna be a worksheet where we have to demonstrate that these, this additional four hundred was spent, was not spent outside certain categories, so they have roads and public works.
Of no's.
Police, fire.
No's.
Those are yeses.
Those are yeses.
Yes, yeah, those are, but we can't, we're not supposed to create new programs, they, they can't go to housing affordability, other things like that.
Make an ice cream.
So, yeah, I just don't think park, I actually think parks and recreation is excluded.
But we can spend it up. So it's not, we could change every year?
So I think you could change it every year, but we're gonna probably have a baseline and then we have to show that we're continuing now, we have no worries because we spend more on police and fire than our total shared revenue.
Well, no.
So, so, and then if you add the seven hundred thousand dollars we levy each year for roads, you know, we're already at three point some million dollars just police, fire and roads. So I'm not too concerned about that. There are cities that actually are concerned because they don't, they just don't spend as much on those specific categories and they're worried about local control. But from what I can see, it's, it's, it's a worksheet thing for us, not a policy change. But no, they're definitely telling the council, we're gonna give you this supplemental aid, but no, this is where you gotta spend it. I don't know what they're afraid of because the cities are already, they, they don't have all this extra money to come up with brand new programs, but I suspect there's some thought that money could be spent on something they don't want it to be spent on. So that's where the shared revenue is at. There's, yeah, there was Senate going back and forth, there's some senators that wanna change TID law. They have some pet peeves about TID law, so they wanna change that. There's, we're gonna lose, part of this is compromise is that we're gonna lose personal property tax, which is less than a hundred thousand for us. So we're gonna lose some aid, some taxes we get from, primarily from businesses that pay personal property taxes. But we're gonna get an increase in aid. And then there was some other provisions about quarries, we can't prohibit quarrying. There's some other things that probably don't have a big impact on the city of River Falls, but would have an impact on like, Town Clifton, right? So if, if somebody wants to quarry an existing quarry or something, they would have some limitations on stopping that.
With the, with the, um, the new aid, can we use it for like a, a fire station payment? So if we took out a loan, say we're only gonna get one point four from the, from the federal government and we gotta, we gotta go get a loan for seven million. Can we, could we use that four hundred grand every year to pay off the loan until it's paid for?
I believe so, and I think one of the strategies we may determine um, is that not only do we wanna use some of our, some, some of our supplemental aid, new aid, we might ask the towns that are participating in rural association and use some of their supplemental to help for the fire station. So, you know, that's not a decision you can make them do, obviously, but you can say, hey, this is what we're gonna do. Do you wanna do some of that? Um, and I would suggest that a new fire station, the way in which we're doing it, which is pretty frugally and using existing building, would be in line with what the legislature thinks is a good use of this supplemental aid. But the rules haven't been published, there isn't, there's gonna be stuff we find out about what's in there that we don't know about. And it's still in jeopardy of getting, you know, passage by both houses, going back to reconciliation and then having the governor sign it. It looks pretty promising at this point. I would, I would say that all momentum is on the side of this happening.
That was very evident when I was in Madison.
For, for some reason, which we should all celebrate, this first time in my public government career in Wisconsin, we are somewhat at the top of the list. It, it, before, it's always been schools or some other group has been up there for funding increases and funding, supplemental funding. And I frankly think local governments, mayors and councils all did a good job of like just having conversations with legislators saying, you know, this is all money that our residents are sending to the state. You're supposed to send us some back so we can provide basic services. And that took police chiefs and fire chiefs and public works directors and city clerks and others to just kinda give real examples of what's going on. Um, and so I think we've moved ourselves to, they have money that they wanna invest in the state. We are good, we are considered a good investment of the government. I think it's well deserved by council because every year you have to balance your budget. Every year you have to say no to things you want to do, that you can't do because you have to make other choices. So the track record is really good. And then they have a separate solution for Milwaukee, which unless you want to talk about that, you know.
I'm good.
It's sticking.
It's, it's, it is the biggest sticking point in this whole thing. And it could collapse the whole, but I don't think it will. So I think Milwaukee will take what, I think they will in the end, if they can't get, they want the sales tax to be automatic. Um, the legislature, some in the legislature want it to be automatic, some want it to be a referendum. I think if they had to settle for the referendum, they'd take their chances at the referendum. So that's the state side. We're gonna hear about other stuff as this goes along that we didn't know about. Home, they're gonna take home rule away from us in some areas that we don't know about because that's kind of something they do every time.
Just FYI.
Okay, so, good, then let's, I'm gonna quick go through, fire station. It's a good thing that the House Appropriations Committee has only allocated one point four million for us. And why would you say that's good? Because they have affirmatively put it in the bill. So that gives Senator Baldwin the ability now to go through the Senate side and they can mark up the bill and work it backwards. But if it didn't even, if one of the fire stations, and Van Orden had, had put three fire stations in, I can't remember which one got out, but it was Lancaster, River Falls and one other.
LaCrosse.
LaCrosse, and only two made it in to the House Appropriations. The chances of Senator Baldwin getting that third station in through her process without it being in the house is a lot harder. Um, so we're, we are, we are told to be encouraged, even though that number doesn't make sense for us. Man Valley, we did submit Noel's Nelson stewardship. That would help fund some of the trail work we're doing already. It isn't a lot of new stuff, it was to try to reimburse us. I guess I shouldn't say reimburse, it's to help fund some important work for the state that has a statewide appeal. So we hope that'll come through. We're also exploring economic development administration, public works and economic adjustment program, which was the program we used for the innovation center, we're looking at that for Man Valley construction. Kenny Corridor, um, we are in pretty good shape. Um, we're gonna continue to push that, um, Army Corps to be speedy in their analysis, which they've so far shown some ability to do.
What's their timeframe?
So less than twelve months from now being done, which.
They're looking at entering the review period in December.
Yeah, which is kinda like speed for them.
December and that review.
And they've already made a visit and they've already done some field work, so that's good science.
What's AMM, AMM?
Merchant McIntyre.
Oh.
We're working on the Safe Streets application, which would be, first we have to do the kinda like a pre-application application, and then we do a big application and that, so that's a big one, probably in the next congressional cycle. And that could be from five to twenty-five million for streets that are, you know, so we're trying to prep our CIP to try to get that. And then Merchant McIntyre is gonna plan a visit on site, August seventh to ninth. And that's part of their, we don't pay for them to visit us outside their contract. This is their, at their expense, we've done the contract and they're gonna come and tour sites and try to get a good feel for everything, so. So with that, I would like to give you a quick update on, if I ever have Jason give you a quick update on the compensation. So, okay, so go ahead.
I thought you were waiting for him, so I thought I had a second.
He is loading, you do have a second.
Um, is there any downside to being tied to the percentage though, in this shared revenue? I mean, what if, yes, Wisconsin economy goes down the toilet?
Yep, that's the whole trade-off.
It's not likely to happen, but it is saying.
It is.
Hooked to something.
It is likely to happen in the cycle every twenty years or so. But we've had zero, I mean, we're actually, we had less money than we had twenty years ago. And even if you assume it's gonna climb for a while and then there's gonna be dip. That's why I also think it's, it was us to remember where that source money is, sales tax basically. And you don't spend everything, you have to have some kind of rein there continuously, you know. Hopefully the state, I think he was gonna spend that a lot. Maybe. So on to Jason.
So I'm gonna give you a real brief update on the class and comp study. And my intent is to be pretty brief because there's not a decision point where we're necessarily trying to lead you to tonight. I mean, certainly you always hold the reins and you, you know, the full bag or all the fat time, but this is just truly meant to be an informational update for you. So every couple of years, um, the city goes through a class and comp study to make sure we're staying competitive in the employment marketplace. I don't think, we are not under the impression that the council is looking for us to be the highest paid municipality in the area. Um, but we are under the impression that the council wants us to remain competitive to make sure we can recruit and retain the best possible talent that, that we can get um, to try to achieve all of those strategic initiatives. So this, we've used outside firms before to look at our class and comp compensation plan and then interspersed with internal reviews. And typically, each of these studies have led, basically have, have had benchmarks or checkpoints within the evolution of our pay plan as it exists today. Um, so for this study, we did put a little bit greater emphasis on some comparables in the Twin Cities metro. Cause it really is, what we are finding is, it's, it's a marketplace that we're pulling talent from or losing talent to. Um, and although that's, that's not isolated, just the Twin Cities metro as, as we're also pulling talent, talent from Eau Claire, for example. But it's certainly our marketplace. I'm happy, so I'm happy to provide any with the list if you'd like, but, but you see there's ten Minnesota cities, six Wisconsin cities, et cetera. And the two county, two counties in Minnesota, um, Washington and Dakota, and Piercey St. Croix in Wisconsin. When we're looking at comparables, we're looking at population, trying to be comparable in population, um, for, when we're looking at cities. Um, the distance from River Falls and looking at those, trying to look at those that include electric utilities and libraries. So we can compare like similar positions to position.
Did the ten cities include, Minnesota cities include Hastings and Red Wing?
It did.
Okay, did those ten cities include per square feet when you compared them per, say, libraries?
I don't think we looked at that for size of library, cause, cause we're looking to make sure they have the staff, a, a librarian that we can compare to, library aide or whatever that, that terminology would be, but we've not facilities.
Okay.
So kinda going through this process, we worked, so I should add real quick, um, sorry to bounce around. We put this out to bid to get these firms interested in providing the class and comp services through a competitive, um, proposal process. And we ended up going with, um, a company called McGrath and worked with them to develop the project orientation, which includes us discussing compensation philosophy to date, structure of our current pay plan, um, how we've graded each position. And, and, and as an FYI, we've done that in the past through kind of a job task analysis where employees kind of, we give them categories that they grade themselves of where they feel, and then it assigns a point value. It's then reviewed by a supervisor, who then grades it to make sure that there's no discrepancy in the points. And then HR looks at it, and this is kinda how we've gotten to the pass of where is it, why certain positions are placed as certain points in the pay plan. Um, and, and essentially establishes our internal equity framework. So, so positions with similar scope and responsibilities, span of control, impact on the organization, the community, independent decision-making, et cetera, are grouped together. And, and so there's, there's these bands or these natural groupings within the pay plan. So McGrath then spent, um, a lot of time looking at those score sheets and looking at our current classification um, and, and doing that point factor job analysis. And then they can, we've asked, we asked them this time to compare our benefits as well as our compensation to those comparables to see how we're stacking up there. And we also, so, and we asked them to conduct an external market survey, analyze that external market data, um, analyze the current, our current compensation structure, pay and demographics. We asked them to do a gender equity review, so, you know, to do an objective third-party analysis of, of our current incumbent placements to see if we're, have any skewed gender-related placements in the pay plan structure. And then, and as I mentioned, that benefit competitiveness. So they're working through that, we, we've met with them to review some initial data and, um, early findings and, and provided them the feedback that they're taking back. And then we'll meet with them further, but essentially what, what they are finding is that our benefits are very competitive with the marketplace. We do not seem to be lacking in any, when it comes to fringe benefits. They did not identify any gender equity concerns within our current pay plan and grade placement of, of incumbent staff. On average, the market comparables are, are roughly showing to be about nine percent higher than, um, our current pay plan. And I'll come back to that one in a second. Um, but, so now we're continuing to work through that, evaluate what, what may be feasible recommendations and implementations and what that may look like and cost. And, and I think it's important to point out, we, I, I think it's fair to say that our, our culture of our organization lends our staff to being the same, the same, that classification and compensation is only one factor in, in our overall strategy. You know, part of the culture we've established is, is, um, recognizing that it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. And so there's other needs in addition to classification and compensation. I mean, everybody certainly wants to be paid a fair wage comparable to the market that, within they work. But, um, we were also offer, able to offer increased flexibility over the last several years, um, some, some opportunity for growth within the organization, et cetera. So this is just one piece of the pie in the overall recruitment and retention strategy. So if, based on how we've implemented, or I guess accepted and implemented class and comp study recommendations in the past, if we find that our, our pay plan and pay grades are five, ten, nine percent behind market, um, it may be a data-informed rationale to adjust our pay plan up. You know, maybe nine percent, maybe five percent, maybe six percent, part of the, part of kind of the, the ingredients in the sausage and coming up with the recipe. It does not, at, at least in the past, it does not necessarily mean staff are getting nine percent raises. So it, it, it may mean we're moving the entry and exit point of each grade. And we may find that some, that causes some staff to fall out of that grade that then fell below the new minimum. So we may have to adjust some staff up. We then may need to look at internal equity, cause that's typically a note for Scott and I. That's a, a big piece of this puzzle we're constantly looking at, is internal equity within the organization. So once we, if we have to move people up to the new minimum, we may have to look at internal equity considerations, may cause some further bumps. There may be some overall increase warranted and considered. But I, I guess my, my point being, you see nine percent, nine percent can be a big number. Um, it doesn't necessarily correlate to all staff getting a nine percent raise.
Jason, when we do exit interviews, I'm making the assumption we do exit interviews.
We do.
What reason, can, can, can we, can we define the reason that they've left, you know, we have six categories. Distance to work, wages, um, uncompatibility with the job description, you know, how many of those are wages? How many are leaving because of wages?
Very few.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And I think, and I think that's a, that's a compliment to, to the council and the leadership over the years. And I think, and I think that's a, that's a compliment to to the council and the leadership over the years and allowing us to remain competitive. I think typically I, this is somewhat anecdotal, but I I think it's probably pretty safe to say that. Typically, we find when people, when when people decide to leave, that it's often for family reasons. Relocation to be closer to family or spouse, or maybe promotional opportunity. We have lost some that seek, which we claim that is a win, you know. We do not typically find them leaving to go seek employment in another municipality doing a similar type position. So that's kudos to us and to to you all for allowing us to remain competitive. And in fact, we've we've kind of stolen several from there, from from Oakdale, from Oakdale, from wherever else.
Pierce County.
Yeah, Pierce County, thank you.
St. Croix just got one of our wastewater people also.
And it's, and 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 so that's a good example, closer to home, much.
Hate was not indicated on that in particular.
The drive became less.
Jason, on that note works as market average for comps, so that's just compensation. That's not talking about benefits or that's just your straight.
Correct.
Salary.
Correct.
You know, your salary. So do you, on your first thing, you said benefits, or you talked about benefits. Do we have any clue where we stack up in the marketplace when you consider the whole package?
I think we will in this study, I mean, based on my preliminary meetings with them, they're just telling us that we're very competitive, that that our benefits are good and competitive. We do, in fact, I know the report will include, they have comparable out of pocket expenses on healthcare deductibles. And I I'm just not prepared to give you that information right now, but it will be in the report and and I think it's, we're we're in the middle of the pack, which is where we want to be.
Yeah, if not even higher, I mean, I think like not to say we shouldn't have did it, but you know, you think of the end of the year, Christmas gifts that we gave. You know, Hudson didn't do anything, New Richmond didn't do anything and there we did what a thousand bucks or something like that.
I think it was.
Yeah.
Well, I could tell you without a report that our benefit structure and our culture is.
High.
Ahead of everybody else.
Yep.
So. I, just a couple of points on this, so it was meant to give you a taste. The council has put this squarely in my lap, so I just, I mean, just to make sure you all know where I think things are. You've you've said, that's good, do a study and you now have to figure out a strategy for implementing it. You need to convince us in the budget presentations and whatever that you can justify what you're doing. So so I'm not necessarily expecting to come back and say, this is what I want you to approve. Outside of the budget process, we may, we may do that if we think the impact is bigger than what we can handle. But we don't have data that says people are leaving for pay, so this isn't about a current situation. This is just about keeping our structure in the sense where we have internal equity and external equity so that we don't run into that situation. But we have no data that would inform me that I've got to do something quick.
Yeah.
And because our incumbents, our incumbents actually surprisingly. We have people here long, even though we have all these new people, we have less new new people than our comparables. So they're, they have like sixty some percent are less than four years or less than three years in their position, so.
So more churn.
So so they have more churn and more issues going on than we do, so this is just, class and comp is one factor. It also is going to involve me making decisions about placing people in grades. There's going to be people that are going to be moved down in grades based on internal equity. Then there's going to be people moved up in grades, almost always due to external equity. So pressures in the market for mechanics, for engineers. Where even though they internally, they may square with somebody else, we're going to move them up because that's what the market is telling us. So we saw that in IT, we saw that in building inspector, there's there's about six or seven electric journeyman linemen. There's a few positions we have sprinkled where, yeah, they're not necessarily doing work that's a whole lot different than somebody else in the organization. But they're going to get paid higher because that skill is in more demand, that technical requirement is different, and so we move that.
Would would maintenance for a building count as somewhat you're saying there then?
I don't think our maintenance positions were.
They were not identified as 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 an issue.
So I'll use the information to inform the decisions. We are, there is not an appeal process in this system that comes to the council. That's another thing I just want to note to you. Some cities do that, I don't know why they would ever do that. So if you have P city employees. Coming to you and talking to you about their placement in a grade or their pay adjustment. I respectfully tell you, tell them that they should talk to Scott or Karen or Jason about that. It doesn't mean you can't listen to them, it doesn't mean that you don't have a fiduciary and an oversight authority. But I would just suggest you be thoughtful about saying, I'll look into it and take care of it for you because. I am making some difficult decisions that not everybody's happy with to try to keep the thing mostly together.
How does that work for the housing authority, authority, because they've been having difficulties maintaining maintenance people?
Yeah, they are not part of this class.
I know that, but I mean, like. In, is that done separately in the sense of how they?
Yeah, I would, I would suspect that they will want to take our study and use all the data for free. And determine how that, because because we'll have a market average for maintenance, we'll have a market average for office, for clerk, concle. And not because we can't raise taxes.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so that's the conundrum.
But but anecdotally, the position the board over ten years has always do everything you can to keep people.
Right.
And a lot of times that was through other means besides pay. And that that's a pretty common, by the way, nonprofit strategy.
We've several times increased the benefits package and that's helped much, but I don't believe they work for as much as they do. I honestly don't, and I hate to say that, but it's tough.
Yeah, it is.
So and then some of this may come home to roost and HUD or somebody else may at some point say, we got to do a nine percent adjustment.
Yeah.
I I wouldn't count on, the other thing we're doing though is. If I know there's pressure on salaries up over time, meaning each FTE is going to cost more in the long run. It goes into our strategy, dog, either holding the line in FTEs or actually looking for ways for organizations to reduce FTEs. Because we may have to pay less people more than pay more people less. Because I don't think that having more people paying them way under market is is a strategy that's going to work. We may have to. Control our FTE and just pay pay good wages to those few positions we decide are priority. Well, I mean. It doesn't mean I'm not, there's no layoffs with this, I'm not, I don't want to get any rumors started, but over time. We're, even as the city grows, we will be challenged to add FTE. Because I think it'll be better for us to just pay specific FTE more than to try to add a whole bunch of people. So that's the update on that.
Scott, I just want to say for the benefit of the group, just like we say in a lot of different things. You do a very good job for those of us who are in the private sector of just taking best practices and implementing them. And the culture you have with the team, the flexibility they have. This isn't like a dear leader praise meeting, right? But but it's really good because I think that is where the retention of the talent comes from is a good culture. And and most data indicates people leave bad bosses and bad culture. And so you guys have done a wonderful job just across the board, that's to be commended.
Thank you. We've got good people and they're not here because they need a specific wage. That's not how we look at this either, but. Okay, council liaison, this is a discussion I just wanted to brainstorm and so let's hold ourselves to the. We got ten minutes to talk about this. In several of my one on ones or in other meeting, public meetings we've had, there's been this, I've had questions from council members like, who is the liaison to this or how does this work? And so I came up with a few, a list of places that. The city already liaisons with, but the council or the mayor may not specifically liaison. The question for this group is. Are there things that are there? And so the question would be primarily for the mayor, the way our ordinance is set up. Because the American appoint. The American point people, the council members or himself to. Work on behalf of the city as an ex-official, as a whatever appointed person. So right now, I am trying to appoint my own staff to different things for liaison. I would give a specific example where it may be beneficial for the council to have a liaison and they actually did at one point, which is the River Falls Rural Fire.
Scott, I've, I've sat on that meeting, the annual meeting where we set the per capita for the last five or six years.
So you probably were there as a representative of the city, but.
I was.
Not as the.
I was not the liaison.
Way back when, I think Jim Norton was appointed the liaison.
Okay.
And so we notified the rural association and then they would send the minutes and the agendas and everything to Jim, even though he was a non voting.
Okay.
The the mayor had officially appointed him the rural fire association liaison and so then they, he was invited and expected to attend meetings and kind of watch and see what's going on. You do not have to do this, the council has no responsibility to like be out at all these meetings and checking on arteries. But we have a growing list of formal partnerships with groups. You're relying almost entirely on staff to liaison, which is totally acceptable, it's within our scope. But you know, KCC doesn't have a council person appointed. Rota Share doesn't have a council person, baseball council doesn't have, our neighbor's place doesn't have. The Chamber, I always try to have a staff person on the board. I am ex-official for some reason. Economic Development Corporation, I'm a board member, Pierce County. St. Croix County, we don't, I think we neither have a liaison nor a staff person.
I'm on the board.
But you're on as a.
I'm on the board as a.
Anchor.
Well, I, they look for people to fill two or three slots. So like I filled River Falls, financial and public service.
Okay.
So I'm on that.
So I guess we do for St. Croix.
For St. Croix, you see.
So and then, and this is the one I don't know how we even do because this, I've had council members ask me like. Who's the, who's the council person for U of R F? And I'm like, well, I, we don't have one and I don't even know who we even be liaison with.
Yes.
Because they, the student senate and the faculty senate are the two legislative bodies. I suppose you could have a liaison with the faculty senate or liaison with the students.
Assistant to the chancellor.
Yeah, but it's.
You're meaning.
But I meet with the chancellor and the school superintendent and the president of the college.
Yeah, so.
So.
I don't think.
Is there any, even if you don't buy the liaison. Argument that you should, is there any groups or things that you were like, well, why wouldn't you have this? Why don't you have this on there? Or do we cover most of what you think are like our groups?
Cork?
Cork is another one, Cindy would be there.
Yeah.
Liaison. Because we do have a lease, we have a part, formal partnership with them.
I know there's a diversity group that that the right envelope is sits on, but I don't know what it's called.
That's the something collective, corners.
Keystone.
Keystone Collective.
Is that Lisa Thompson's group?
No, that.
Small white, okay.
The grassroots community. What is the, oh yeah, P flag, we don't have.
That's Lisa Thompson.
But P flag, we also don't have a, there's no member in it, understanding, no. There's no formal partnership with Keystone, we don't either. Cork, we do. So is this something you just want to put to bed or is there interest?
Say, if you think council's interested, can't they just come to us and knock to the floor?
Absolutely, they absolutely could just talk to the mayor.
And I'm assuming the only thing we point a council liaison to would be something we have an agreement with. Or something we partner or need for.
It's up to, it's, this is totally up to you. Staff is willing to continue to fulfill the role.
Yeah.
The only one that I can see. Having a strong benefit. In the short term at least would be the. River Falls Rural Fire, because what you have there sometimes is the fire chief and me, which are two staff people. And all elected officials, and then we're trying to speak on your behalf. And sometimes they, it doesn't have the same weight as if there was a council person saying, well, I'll take that back.
Is that Leroy sat on that, May sat on that?
So you've gone to the budget as being a budget person.
I'm happy to take that role if if.
Please, you're in.
Go for it.
Go for it.
We'll be negotiating this.
Quickly.
Yeah, you're in.
Okay, so we'll bring that up and the rest of them, if you're interested, let the mayor know.
Yeah.
Is there any need for us to be collecting minutes and agendas of these groups and providing them to the council?
As long as we're on this, Pierce County or St. Croix Economic Development Corporation, which one are you getting the award from?
Pierce.
Okay, I I want to, I hope all the council knows that Scott's giving a, for the Pierce County Economic Development Corporation. You're getting a, is it, what's the, what's the exact name of it?
It's like economic development.
Yeah, guy of the year.
Guy of the year.
They, they, they just want more development, Pierce County.
Yeah, it's a, it was a nice honor there, I got a call, I don't know which one of you was responsible for it, but.
And that's on the night?
I think it's a breakfast, it's a breakfast on the night, because I'm not sure I can bake it.
I only saw a little clipping that's on the.
I thought you knew that's what that was when you said.
Yeah, the guy.
That's what you made on my schedule. Somebody baked it on the break.
I think that's great, good for you.
So there's breakfast meeting somewhere.
I think it's a.
Judge junior.
I think it was a large, really large business member.
On June ninth?
No, it's an individual economic development generator or something like that.
It's the nine o'clock, the June ninth?
I think it's earlier than that. It's usually.
Order back, always gets all the credit. The lineman never get recognized.
He's a lineman and lineman.
It is professional business leader.
There you go.
Award. And it's breakfast. And we get two tickets.
There you go.
Oh, I get two guest tickets and I don't think any of my family members will be attending, so if any of you.
This is already out by that point.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's true.
You ever get up to go to breakfast?
Well, Sam's up at six, maybe I'll take him at seven. Oh, okay, thank you, mayor. So, all right, let's move along. So this is just a blast from the past. I want to remind you what you've been telling me or what I've heard. So this was the why. And then we talked about this legacy piece over here is like if, when you're done. When you're telling your grandkids or somebody, you know, what what exactly did you do when you were on city council? You identified a bunch of these things as. Things you wanted to get done, so don't, I I want you to know that I don't forget what you tell me. And then I would also tell you, this is subject to revision by you. But you need to let me know you've revised it. And so that's why we do these priority sessions, work sessions, one on ones, is so that I can have an understanding. Of things that you you talked about, you know, I remember Jeff talking about curb appeal and cleanliness, right? And so that, keep that on my list of, as we're doing our work as a city and we're implementing strategies or programs or service changes. How is that impacting curb appeal and cleanliness? We've talked about. You know, the fire station came up quite a bit in people's mind that you really want. People, when you're done to be like, hey, we we supported the fire department. River, right, there's, there's these things that are. You put them here, I am trying to put them in staff's head. And as these things change for you, you just need to talk about it out loud. You need to be talking to me or emailing me or talking with your peers. And as things change in the community, you are, you are the best sensors we have for what's going on. Under the current technology, you can, you are kind of walking focus group holders, you are walking surveyors. And you can do it smarter than just collecting the data and spitting it back. You can synthesize it, you can think about it, you can ask follow up questions of those people and then you can provide that that detail less. Which makes the value of the data you're providing us as staff that much better because it's just not raw. It's with context and it's with history and it's with thoughtfulness. And the ability to trade all these things off because this job is not going to get easier. Um, and the ability to trade all these things off because this job is not going to get easier. It's going to be more complex, more impacted by technology. The things people think they want or need are going to go up. Their willingness to pay is not likely to go up at the same level as, as what they're looking for. And so the job will continue to be a challenge to, to say no to things. But these are the yeses. These are what you were hoping to get to so that when we're all done with this work together, that we've got some of this stuff done. So. Uh, we have done, uh, some incredible stuff as a community. And put ourselves in, in position to keep doing that. So, as we wrap up for today, I guess I would just, if you want to take five or 10 minutes to, to review this list yourselves, and then to this extent that you want to modify that list or, and I don't really mean you subtracting things unless you really want to subtract things. This would be more of an addition exercise for you all. Did I invite you? There's some Sharpies there. You can, you can write on the pad, the post-it note, things that you want to leave for the group that we keep thinking about. So take, let's take till, uh, six thirty for you to just kind of think about that, jot your notes down, and we can add some things up. Um, and then we'll, we'll use the last, uh, try to get out of here early, but we'll use fifteen minutes or so to just reflect on today. I can give you a summary of what I think I heard and then we can talk about any, any work you think we need to do, more changes and we, before we do this again. I think you can leave a recording and just remind everybody that we're recording. So this is required reflection till we get back to six thirty.
They're a little late.
I knew you know what happened. It's twenty years. Two thousand and fifteen, they had. I don't have any idea, but I think I, things were pretty good.
It's great.
Yeah, can you hope what else can you hope for? This is the city administrator and the comp plan, or the compensation plans.
Way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Max though.
Yep.
You're getting down, right? I mean, I think there's like comp plan strategy.
Yeah, for a good council.
Well, we already kind of did that.
Where you can change the comp plan implement.
Implementations. Something there, yeah.
That's kind of a do as a goal. It just matched it up because I got a Leslie on the. Maybe they're trying to tell him to something. Well, at least it's red in the one thing.
Some of them make crispy's over there.
All right, well, let's, uh, I'll pull us back together and, oh, Todd, Todd will be. We gotta give him the full, full minute.
I got some more ideas.
No.
What was it? A newspaper? See then, this is exactly why I want two people. Yeah, that's good. Trig is the best.
Yeah, there you go.
So you might have to start it. Like six agenda this year.
No, I got one here and I printed it out from the packet on the email.
So is there, it seems still like generally seem like a, a list, accurate list? Anything I missed that you think you said in twenty twenty-two that I didn't get on there?
I mean, there is items that kind of fall under other items. Um, one I know we've talked about and, uh, we like, but it's stuck in legal limbo still is the transportation utility fee, which falls under affordability. Much like street lighting, much like street lighting utility, but this one's in legal limbo where if it gets in there, it would actually help mixing with the shared revenue to bring down costs of roads and infrastructure. Another area.
It's going to be tested here soon.
Yep.
Couple of my colleagues are, are going full speed ahead with transportation utilities.
And that's what the municipal leagues have said, told people. They said they don't expect this to be an issue. If they want to go forward, they can. If they want to hit pause, that's reasonable too. So that certainly falls under affordability. You know, I also look at developing affordable housing strategy should be directly in the comp plan. Once we know what that means for us as a city, but we're still getting. One of the things I like, the idea of, um, potentially would be something like branding. And I know we've talked about it before. But I know the fighting fish have a lot of meaning to certain people in the city. I also know the heritage of the city is a fishing city. It makes sense that the fish might be considered a logo that you could read on a letterhead, a, a document, a billboard that can easily be manipulated and sized. That would kind of be like a silhouette, easy to recreate. Maybe you could even use it on the streetlight type of thing on the main street. So this is an idea. I mean, that's part of heritage when you look at, uh, a legacy. And certainly the Kinnick Quarter Project has a lot of pull with that too, I suspect.
The only change I've got is comp plan strategy might change to comp plan implementation or something along those lines.
Are you feeling generally good as a group about the comp plan? The, the end product?
It's, yeah, I think so. I think it's healthy. I think sometimes you have to do what you need first, then just what you want.
Yeah, so you'll be, so we'll be pulling the nuggets out of there that you, that were identified as the next things. You'll start, you may get sick of hearing while this was, we're implementing what was in there. So that's, that's the next step. So that's good. I mean, I, I guess that's kind of fun that we moved one of those along already.
Um, regarding fire station, I really wish it wasn't tied that it had to be down in Pierce County. So I wish we could move it up to by the, um, ballpark and I wish that we could, um, redevelop that core, um, center of the city. Uh, where the fire station is now with, um, stuff besides a fire station with, um, you know, small commercial and residential and stuff. And I just, I, 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 I wish we weren't, um, tied that, or felt that we had to, we had to do the fire station down, down there.
Well, I think that location was like sixteen million, wasn't it?
Yeah, our best estimate for greenfield is twelve to sixteen million. Yeah, and then question will be, again, if the feds don't come up with the money, well, I, I think we're going to have that art, that discussion again because there's also an opportunity cost lost by building it downtown.
Yep.
And figuring out if that was really four or six or 10 million is hard to come up with without knowing what the, the alternative is. But there's some, there's some opportunity cost probably lost downtown.
Yeah, and, and you took away part of what I wanted to say is there, there are definitely lost, um, revenue opportunities not building downtown. And, you know, when we talk about affordable housing and, and, and part of what we want for that affordable housing or that low income housing or whatever you want to call it, housing is to have it so it's walkable. So if you're there, everything's in walk, walkable distance, you know? Not just the movie theater, but the grocery stores and the barber shops and everything else. So there's a lot of lost opportunities not taking advantage of that, um, for a central location. One other thing, if I can, I guess I'll just finish off. I had two things, fire station. And then the other thing was where we have with, um, connecting our sidewalks and, and moving that plan along.
We had an interesting discussion. Was that, was it?
Really? Yeah, I'm sorry, guys.
That's all right. It's recorded. So that's a good thing. And it was generally positive about trying to do something, but also generally pragmatic about the challenges of getting it to be a priority. If I can, this group was positive about sidewalks, but still not seeing it as, as one of the top priorities for us to go after. The, I don't know, that's, that's a fair.
Did you list a couple of priorities, sidewalk areas or?
Nothing specific about, about the sidewalk areas, but it was, it was more in the bigger picture discussion of what are the, what are the strategies for the city that's back earlier in the slide deck? And, um, these are the things that we have to do. These are the things we want to do, but they don't rise to the level of getting on the half due page yet.
Okay, cool. And we, and Scott promised us he could get all those things done on that page.
This is the small page.
Small. Just wanted to go back to.
This one. This is the, this is the likely recommended initiatives, Jeff. And then we talked about this is the page that didn't get on um, this time around. So yes, this is the advice recommended to you. I'm making a commitment. Okay.
I'll just say if you're going to use the word legacy, I can't be with all this task stuff as important as this, cause that to me isn't legacy. It's really good. It's important things. The way I looked at it was, it was deeper, a little more philosophical. I'm struck by how many people we all know that those of us who are from town who left and come back. So I think of our legacy in terms, and this is collaborative across a lot of different disciplines and groups, a community where people want to come home. And that's what I think River Falls is. They might live somewhere else for forty years, but this is still home, right?
Well, and I, I am always heartened, yeah, with, with people who grew up here, graduated and found a way to stay and like not go. Cause we've got some, some very vibrant young families that are, are in the future. Some are more fixed.
Uh, we've been doing, I mean, that's a specific strategy, right? We're, we're now trying to seek out. Like I went through last year's graduate list in the newspaper and looked for people that said they wanted to be electric line. Like if, if, now, how many of them at eighteen are going to stick with their plan? But if they're already saying, hey, this is what I want to do, they might want to stick, stick something in their ear to say, hey, you know, we actually have those positions.
They're going to Dakota County.
Yeah.
Technical college.
So now we've, we've been really on our water, wastewater groups. Pretty good bunch there and electric, we've done well and public works. We're starting to get some hires there that are open that. Okay, well, so, um, for a wrap up then, I guess we just, I'll quickly go through what I heard. Um, for the C I P, I think we heard that our strategy is, is accepted. That it's understood that some things will be delayed. I heard a couple of ideas of things that we should be maybe more aggressive on. And then, um, one thing we didn't touch on, Jason touched on it in a generic way, but I'll touch on it specifically is the C I P is still a living document right now. Just had a discussion about body worn cameras for police officers, right? So figuring out if that's got to go into C I P and how we get it in, when we haven't done the analysis and we don't have an implementation plan. That's, that's a question that just came up. And so now, I don't mean just came up like we've never thought about body worn cameras, but it's, it's becoming a little more reality for us to try to work on. So.
Isn't that part of one of the grants we're going after? Or is that, is it not body cameras?
Body worn cameras is not a grant that we currently.
That was longer.
But there is some grants for that, that we would likely have to use as part of, part of our strategy. Um, so that's what I remember from C I P, a big thought, cause again, it was, this is all coming back to you. So it's.
Sounds like there are a lot.
Um, body worn cameras for outfitting are, will be two hundred thousand dollars in capital cost. And likely we need a half to one F when we just administer the data requests and data programs. It's a big, it's, it's a two hundred thousand dollar upfront cost and that'd be fifty to a hundred thousand dollar a year operating addition to our. So it's, it's a big question. Then I, the strategic initiative, we heard some, I heard strong push from the council to figure out some phase of the mainstream plan.
Just a little nugget too.
Which, which.
Get the hook in.
I understand and I'll have to think about if I could say no to my bosses. So. So, um, but the main point there was that I, yes, we can still crank at the same RPMs we are staff wise. I don't advise it. I think it's time to, to turn it down a notch for the number of strategic initiatives we're trying to accomplish in a two-year period. Focus on these really big ones we've got and then we are, we would specifically be delaying things we know are good things to work on for two years. The streetlight utility, we talked about getting additional information about the comparable impact of levy to, to feed. I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of forty dollars on levy impacted twenty-four then. Just to enroll percentages of our eight million dollar levy and two hundred and fifty thou, two hundred and forty thousand of, of that is like. two hundred and fifty thou, two hundred and forty thousand of, of that is like two point something percent, so two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house pays X amount of taxes, I think that's about where it is, but we'll get that figured out. Housing fund.
Go back to streetlights. You're going to give me the percentage of, of taxable versus non taxable properties.
Taxable versus non taxable properties. And we also, I don't think there was consensus, but the recommendation's probably not going to change, which is we think state owned property is going to be exempt from, from mandatory fee, but I'm going to work on voluntary payment, see. Housing fund. What we heard was that for now, you're fine leaving the money from HUD in there, and you're open to additional uses, and you do want us to move towards a policy, but there didn't seem to be extreme urgency on a policy right now.
Other than keeping it toward housing.
Yes, yeah, there was no, there was clarity there that council's not looking to find creative non housing, and not even, not necessarily even for housing in general, it would be more specific towards a workforce or moving those needles or. Legislative update, we recalled the information, I would just all remind you that if you have any informal running, if you run into representatives, senators, congressmen, by all means, you should be telling them that it's an important thing for us to increase shared revenue, we talked a little bit about the drawback of if the economy drops, then potentially this revenue, but that we haven't gotten the increase in twenty years. So tying ourselves to, to tax, sales tax in the long run should be, excuse me, a net gain for us. And then comp, class and comp, we talked about. Essentially, I would characterize my initial draft read as we're in good shape, but that we shouldn't get complacent, we need to be thoughtful about the adjustments we make. And then I reminded you all that you've asked me to do the class and compensation management for the city, and so that I will be trying to figure out a way to make this all work. And it likely will it mean some of the job, pay adjustments for, up for some employees. But it doesn't mean that they'll be nine percent or ten, any, there's no magic number at this point. And I think our non, non wage compensation is the primary reason for people being here. We have to keep our wages competitive. Oh, we're not going to buy, we're not buying employees in, not that I can see that, that's not a good strategy. And then we talked about liaison, there was little interest in doing additional or increased amount of liaisons, um, with the exception of Earl Fire, Mr. Morissette, and there was also not interest in having us like summarize all the minutes, agendas, notes from all these groups that, that periodic updates, higher reports or other reports is fine for the council. And then impact and vision, I heard a few updates, but otherwise, generally, you're happy that I'll be keeping those things in mind as we work together. I want to emphasize again your role in the community as providing, you know, good contact points and engagement for, for people and that. Um, keep doing that, and uh, to the extent that staff can assist you in that, we wanted to, want to help you, we're hoping that the timeliness of information, we didn't talk about that. It's part of my wrap up, Jennifer and I are still constantly working on making sure that when you have questions that we can reasonably answer quickly, that we get that back out to you. If you have questions that require more analysis, that we're at least inventorying them and getting a strategy to try to get some answers timely back to you, and so, and we're sharing a lot of that with the whole council, and we do that. And so I think that's a wrap for me, you get the mayor, the last words, you can decide what else, if anything we need to talk about.
I think we're ready to go home. I got nothing, if anybody else got any.
If you haven't done it, you should all do a ride along with the police.
Yep.
Get ahold of Deputy Chief Kennett, he'll set it up. It's a good, it's a good thing to do, and they appreciate the, they appreciate the interest.
And it doesn't require a certain amount of time.
No.
You don't have to do a whole shift or anything, it's.
I did one years ago and ended up going out to the shooting range too.
Oh, yeah.
That's the other thing. Who's going to say move to a juror, but there's, and now I just say the police.
And I don't know what Gordy, I don't know what Gordy would say, but if anybody wants a tour of the new, of the new shooting range or the new familiar. Definitely ask about that, that's, is very cool.
He's invited me to, I'm scared to go.
No, no, do it, it's really cool.
Yeah, all the council has been specifically invited to come. Sergeant Anderson will probably run, I don't, is that who's?
It's pretty cool.
So it, it can provide good perspective, and it's, it's an investment. So you can see that it's a tool, not a toy, because it sounds very toyish. But it's, definitely has some tool benefits. And the police were very happy with all of your support during St. Clair County tragedy, and I think they're feeling pretty, morale is pretty be positive, um, generally about being off certain falls, and you all have, have something to do with that too, so. Thanks for all the time today, I appreciate it, it's not, I think we got through a bunch of stuff, and then I'll be happy to take one to one feedback, if you didn't want to share that with the group, you can tell me what thing was stupid in our good time, you see your time later.
Thanks, staff, John.
Thank you for sticking around, extra time.
A ride along, for some of you.